The National Anthem and the reading of the invocation.
As we come together today, we recognize the great responsibilities laid upon us. Our council will always strive to understand the needs of the people we serve and to use power wisely and well. Our purpose is to establish and maintain a city of prosperity and righteousness where freedom prevails and where justice rules. Let us also not forget those who've served our community and who are no longer with us so that we must continue to work, do the work that we must in their memory. Please be seated. So tonight we have from the clerk's office assisting us as we normally do at council meetings, Tanya Daniels, City Clerk, with assistance from Melanie Figurito. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Van Der Stel?
Present.
Counselor Utley?
Here.
Counselor Slass?
Present.
Counselor McCurry?
Here.
Counselor Martin?
Here.
Counselor Carpenter?
Counselor Carpenter's here.
Counselor Antoski?
Here.
Counselor Van Tilburg?
Present.
Counselor Wall?
Present.
And Mayor Davis.
Present.
I'd like to remember, remind council members and the viewing public of a few procedural rules for virtual meetings. And they are as follows, all members are to remain muted during the meeting to reduce feedback. All web cameras for council members shall be turned on. Excuse me, so you continue to count for quorum and that quorum is maintained. Staff were requested to join the video meeting as and when the need should arise to answer questions from members of council. Any member of council should indicate they wish to speak by pushing the raised hand button in the participants box. Clerk staff, lower your hand once you finish speaking. In the event that a service interruption occurs that affects quorum, we will adjourn for up to 15 minutes. Failure to establish quorum within that time period will result in the meeting being adjourned. All members are participating via online video conference, both using eScribe, and the clerk will announce the voting results. Members of the public who've registered as delegates will take part electronically, via webcam or via telephone as the case may be for the meeting. All rules for delegations under the city's procedural rule by law otherwise apply. So we'll move into declarations of conflict of interest. My understanding, Counselor Wall, that you have a conflict you'd like to declare an item 12.3.6 Mohawk Institute Save the Evidence. Counselor Wall, can you please confirm that and state the nature of your conflict?
Yes, I confirm the conflict. My fiancee is a full-time employee of the Woodland Cultural Center.
Thank you. Are there any other conflicts that members wish to declare in respect to any item that's on the agenda tonight? If so, push the raised hand button. So not seeing any raised hands. Just a reminder that we're now dealing with the separation of items for committee reports. Just a reminder that the resolutions, items 13.1, they are dealt with individually. And we do have some matters that have already been separated. We have 12.3.1, which is the downtown community improvement plan. I believe Counselor Van Der Stel has an amendment. 12.3.2, the Grayfields Community Improvement Plan. Again, Counselor Van Der Stel has an amendment he wants to bring forward. 12.2.16 Oak Park Road Extension. Counselor Carpenter has an amendment he'd like to bring forward. And of course, 12.3.6, the Mohawk Institute Save the Evidence because of Counselor Wall's declared conflict. So are there any other items that members would like separated for discussion purposes? Please indicate by pushing the raised hand button. All right. Counselor Utley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 12.3.4 Development Application Process.
Counselor Van Der Stel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do indeed have some separations. 12.1.1 New Branch Crossing Bridge. 12 point-
You just go through a little bit slowly.
Okay. 12.1.1, Mr. Mayor?
I've got that in there.
12.1.6.
Joint Use Agreement?
That is correct, sir. 12.1.15.
12.1, the Community Safety Zones. No?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Um, 12.2.2.
12.3?
Sorry, 12.2.2, that's the new affordable housing development.
On it.
And one more, 12.4.2, which is high water bill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So not seeing requests for any other items to be separated. So Counselor Martin, can you please move the motion to approve all items in committee reports 12.1 to 12.4 that were not separated for discussion purposes?
I move second by Counselor McCurry that all items contained within the committee reports 12.1 through to 12.4 not separated for discussion purposes be approved.
All right, Tanya, would you please take the vote then on the matters that have not been separate after you've read the title of those items?
Certainly. So the items subject to this vote include from the Committee of the Hall Operations and Admin, Community Safety and Well-Being Plan Final Approval. 12.1.3 Cumberland Street 0.3 Meter Reserve Dedication. 12.1.4 Winfield West Phase 8A Subdivision Agreement and Road Dedication Bylaw, Bell House Avenue. 12.1.5 Customer Experience Update. 12.1.7 Cultural and Historical Channels, excuse me, Channels and Protection Reward Program. 12.1.8 Employee Service and Recognition Awards Policy to Include Part-Time Staff. 12.1.9 Neighborhood Association Community Safety Toolkits Program Plan. 12.1.10 Walter Gretzky Lord Mayor Tribute Bust and Branch 90 Legion Cared Public Art Proposals. 12.2.11 Service Review Opportunities. 12.2.12 Community Programs Update Healthy Aging Passport Program and Participaction Community Challenge. 12.2.13 Francis Street Traffic Control. 12.2.14 Project Noisemaker. From your Social Services Committee, Item 12.2.1 2020 Annual Progress Report of the Provincial Legislative Brantford 10-Year Housing Stability Plan 2014 to 2024. Premier Community of the Whole Community Development Report. Item 12.3.3 Digital Communications AODA Compliance Action Plan. 12.3.5 Noise Bylaw Amendment. Premier Finance Committee 12.4.1 2020 Audited Consolidated Financial Statements. 12.4.3 Update on Capital Projects. 12.4.4 2020 Year-End Operating Budget Surplus. 20.4.5 Treasurer's Annual Report on Lease Financing Agreements for 2020. And 12.4.6 The Treasurer's Investment Report for 2020. I'll proceed now with the vote on all those items. All items not separated for discussion purposes have carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselors Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, we'll now move to the clerk's report and communications. I understand Counselor Carpenter, you have that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by my wardmate, Counselor Cheryl Antoski, that the clerk's report and communication for June 2021 be received.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Tony, would you please take the vote on this item?
Certainly. So I'll proceed with the clerk's report on communication, but we did skip over proclamations and just-
Well, you're right, we did. My mistake. So let's deal this one first and we'll go back.
Certainly. Counselor Carpenter, can I just confirm the secondor for this item, please?
Counselor Antoski is a secondor. Hands up.
Thank you very much for that. I'll open the vote now. The clerk's report on communications has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselor Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Yeah, and so with the clerk's timely reminder to me, we'll now go back to item 7 Statutory Public Meetings Recognitions of Achievement. We have nothing on the agenda tonight for that. We do have several proclamations. Counsel Utley, I understand you've got the resolution to approve the proclamations. If you please read the motion and state your secondor.
With delight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by my wardmate, Counselor John Slass, that the following proclamations be approved. 8.1 Canadian Multiculturalism Day and 8.2 Year of the Garden and Garden Day 2022. Thank you. Oh, there's a few more in there that weren't on my list. Um, I'll start again. Whereas multiculturalism, oh, I'm no, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, I get to read that one because I've got it. So I'll take them there as prerogative and I'll read it. So whereas multiculturalism is a fundamental part of our Canadian heritage and identity, and whereas residents of all backgrounds have made and continue to make valuable contributions to Canadian society, and where it is appropriate to celebrate these contributions and recognize the importance of Canada's diversity, and where it's necessary to enhance the awareness of cultural diversity throughout Canada and strive to foster mutual respect amongst Canadians of diverse backgrounds. And whereas the Brantford Immigration Partnership helps to foster a welcoming community and support for the successful integration of new Canadians, residents of Brantford. And whereas the City of Brantford Healthy Kids Program launched Healthy Kids Celebrate Culture to help children and families understand, explore, and celebrate cultures within our community. And whereas the City of Brantford recognizes the valued contributions that our multicultural community in Brantford does to strengthen our society socially, culturally, and economically. And whereas every year on June 27th, all Canadians are invited to celebrate Canadian Multiculturalism Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council Incorporated City of Brantford proclaims June 27, 2021 as Canadian Multiculturalism Day in the City of Brantford. And I believe Counselor Antoski, you have the second one, the Year of the Garden and Garden Day 2022.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Year of the Garden celebrates the centennial of Canada's horticultural sector. And whereas gardens and gardening contribute to the quality of life of our municipality and create safe and healthy places where people can come together. And whereas gardens and gardening have helped us face the challenges of COVID-19, of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the City of Brantford is proud to have a rich tradition of horticultural excellence with more than 180 floral gardens plus many other floral works of art and equal ground community gardens, which supports and maintains numerous vegetable and pollinator gardens throughout the city. And whereas the Year of the Garden will highlight and celebrate the important contributions of our local gardening organizations and horticultural professionals and businesses. And whereas communities in bloom in collaboration with the Canadian Garden Council invites all municipalities to celebrate the Year of the Garden. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Brantford hereby proclaims 2022 as the Year of the Garden in celebration of the contribution of gardens and gardening to the development of our country, our municipality, and the lives of our citizens in terms of health, quality of life, and environmental challenges. And that the Saturday before Father's Day, June 18th, in 2022, be recognized as Garden Day in the City of Brantford as a legacy of Canada's Year of the Garden 2022.
Thank you, Counselor Antoski. So Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote approving the proclamations?
All proclamations have carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselors Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Tanya, so the next item is presentation delegations. We have no presentations or delegations registered for this evening's meeting. So we'll move right into minutes approving the minutes of previous meetings. And I believe Counselor Slass, you have that resolution, please, if you please read each second.
I do, Mr. Mayor. It's moved on myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counselor John Utley, that the following minutes be adopted, namely, City Council, April 27, 2021. Special City Council, May 25, 2021. Special City Council, June 1, 2021. Special City Council, June 3, 2021. Special City Council, June 8, 2021. Special City Council Private and Confidential, May 25, 2021. Uh, Special City Council Private and Confidential, June 3, 2021. Special City Council Private and Confidential, June 8, 2021. And that the following minutes be received. John Noble Home Committee of Management, June 9, 2021. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Errors and omissions on the regular special council meetings or discussion with John Noble Home Committee of Management Meeting Minutes. Counselor Carpenter?
Just ask for a separation of 11.6 to 11.8.
Do that. Seeing no other hands raised. Madam Clerk, could you please take the vote, please, first on the, I think it's three items or four items that were, four, three items that were separate.
Items 11.6 through to and including 11.8 have carried on a recorded vote of 9 to 1. Those voting in favor, Counselor Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, Counselor Carpenter.
All right, the balance of the items, please, Tanya.
The remaining set of minutes have carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselor Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
So before we move into the items that were separated for discussion purposes, I would be remiss to field acknowledge that Counselor Weaver is not here this evening. He is ill and unable to attend. So let's move then into committee reports, item 12, I think. Counselor Van Der Stel, I think you've got the motion to put those items on the floor.
I do indeed, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tanya. That all items in the committee reports, items 12.1 to 12.4 separated for discussion purposes be approved.
Thank you. So let's move into the items that have been separated. Counselor Van Der Stel, you've got the first one, that's 12.1.1, the Three Grand River Croft Crossings Environmental Assessment.
What, me again? Okay.
Sorry, Counselor Van Der Stel, my apologies to interrupt any secondor before these items are on the floor.
Seeking a secondor, I see one in Counselor Van Tilburg.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm missing Counselor Weaver as well, so thank you. Um, okay, so 12.1.1. Um, I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification as a result of some communication that came my way with regard to the approaches on the proposed new bridge, the new elevated bridge, what may be an elevated bridge at Branch Crossing. So one of the concerns that came to me specifically was a concern about the approach to the bridges from both directions. And that they be, that they follow AODA standards, of course, but that there is a clear separation and a safe separation between pedestrians and people who use alternate forms of transportation so that there's a there's a clear separation and there's enough room rather than including something called a switchback, that there's actually a a well-constructed ramp there. Is there, is Brian, I think I saw Brian Hughes here earlier. I might be here. Randy, would you be able to answer that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's the ultimate design. And that's going to be taken, we'll take that in when, into consideration when we are designing it. For me, it's really not ideal situation, but there may be things we could do to the approach on the trail to limit that or maybe even not require it. So we really have to get into the detailed design once we see how, when we remove the deck, we remove, sorry, and raise. When that, when that raising happens, how much slope we can actually get on the, on the trail. And if we have to reconstruct the trail and possibly not need the switchback. So we'll look at that first foremost because, you know, even from our standpoint, that's another area that you'd have to maintain as well. Rather than just have the, the trail to plow and, or, you know, maintain. So we will look at that during the detailed design and try to mitigate that as much as possible.
Okay, thank you very much, Andy, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other questions or discussion? Tanya, would you please take the vote on this?
I have to go out and back in again. I'm voting in affirmative, please, Tanya.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll note that. Item 12.1.1 being Three Grand River Crossing Environmental Assessment has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselor Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, let's move to the next item, which is 12.1.6, I believe, Counselor Van Der Stel. You asked for this one to be separate. That's the Joint Use Agreement Update.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. This, I know, goes to Brian Hughes. Brian, within the agreement as it stands now, have we, have we increased our ability to provide places for specifically folks in West Brant, neighborhood associations, groups of organized individuals to meet? Or has that number actually gone down through this process? Through you, Mr. Mayor. To answer your question, Counselor, it's the, the agreement will basically include facilities we have booked in the past. So there won't be any increase to the number of facilities that we utilize. Because it's separate agreements and we're going to negotiate them separately. There is a possibility, depending on the outcome of the negotiations, of course, that we might have, we might have less facilities to deal with. At the end of the day, we definitely won't have more. But, but you're also hearing from our groups that we, we require more spaces, but there simply aren't more to be had. Is that correct? Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct. Okay, all right. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's been a long, you know, a long haul, a long battle, but I appreciate all the effort that went into at least maintaining what we have. And I'm looking forward to what might come through in, in future negotiations with another, another party. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do, Counselor Carpenter?
Yeah, as well to Mr. Hughes. You said there wouldn't be more, but if the school board built another school down there, that would become part of the joint use agreement. There could be more with it, if there's new schools built, could you not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct, Counselor Carpenter. Yes, there could be more if new schools are built. There would, there would be the possibility of adding that space to the current inventory.
Thank you.
Let's see, any discussion? Tanya, would you please take the vote on this side?
Item 12.1.6, Joint Use Agreement Update 2021 has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselor Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Tanya. The next separate item is 12.2.15 Community Safety Zones, Counselor Van Der Stel. That was on your request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you too, I'm not 100% certain. I'm wondering, I'm so happy to see this come forward as an opportunity for public consultation on community safety zones. And if I understand it correctly, we are going to launch a media campaign on my Brantford that will give the public the opportunity to have their, their say and their input on what areas are most affected. When, when does that, when do you hope that that campaign will start to roll out? And how, approximately, how much time do people have for that, for that, for the feedback to occur properly?
Through the Mayor, Guggan Batra, Senior Project Manager of Special Projects. We were aiming to get started on preparing for the, the campaign as soon as this is approved at council tonight. So we'll, we'll communicate with our communications team and work with them to get the, the campaign launched. Then depending on how much engagement we can get through, let's talk Brantford. It might be a couple of months starting in the fall, but we'll really have to gauge how many folks are getting engaged in that process and then we can determine how long to, to run the campaign.
Okay, that was one of my concerns with regard to engagement. If it does fail, is there a chance that we could run a concurrent method of, of consultation so that, you know, we get as much feedback as we possibly can?
Through the Mayor, yep, we can, we can look at that. We'll explore all options to ensure that we're maximizing public engagement.
And then the timeline would conceivably be the third quarter this year or the latest fourth quarter?
Yes, through the Mayor, that's the plan.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much, Guggan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, seeing no other discussion. Tanya, would you please tweet the vote on this side?
Item 12.1.15 being Community Safety Zones has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselor Van Der Stel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, let's move to the next separate item, which I believe is 12.2.16, the Oak Park Road Extension. Leave Counselor Carpenter, that goes to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Counselor Van Der Stel for bringing this forward at Committee of the Hall. This resolution was pretty extensive. And I was quite surprised and pleasantly surprised that the number of councils that said they would never vote for Oak Park Road Extension and that they don't believe this is the right way to go. And that it should come off the table and we should not be considering it. And I agree with that. I think that's, but the public is not quite comfortable with the resolution. You can see it in social media and all over the place. And I suspect they're not comfortable because previous councils promised not to sell Arredale Golf Course. And then in the first year of, of first quarter of, third or fourth quarter of a new council, they did just that. And this resolution talks about the first the first year of a new council in the fourth quarter, making a decision, having this deferred to it, so. After all have spoken, I'd like to move an amendment that adds clarity to that, because I'm sure all members of council meant what they said, or the most members of council, I believe, that they, they do not want to consider Oak Park Road Extension, and they'd like this to be off the table, and so I have an amendment that actually clarifies that clearly, and I'm sure that was the intent. At least I believe it was, that this will come forward, as my amendment will be accepted, and we can have some clarity to the, the public, the members that are, have been opposed to this Oak Park Road Extension, could clearly understand that we are not supporting this move, move going forward, thank you.
Well, I don't see any hands raised, so why don't you, whoop, hang on, Counselor Vanders, no. I don't see any hands.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Right, I don't see any raised hands, Counselor Carpenter, so why don't you proceed with your amendment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the amendment is, after, it says that staff be directed to complete investigative studies currently underway in order to finalize phase two of the environmental assessment. And after the end, I would strike out then to place the, and I would strike that out and replace that with that the Oak Park Road Extension and, and strikeout environmental assessment be removed as an option, and then strikeout on hold in order to fully explore. Then, then have staff be, when staff to, or sorry, then staff to investigate alternatives as follows in the report, so I just want to make it clear that we're moving it as an option, and that's why I've moved that as amendment. And I believe my second is Counselor Toski.
Yep, she's confirming that, so, I don't know, Tonya, do you have the, can we share the wording?
I think she has some of the wording, we were wordsmithing this back and forth, but I just wanted to make it clear that that we're, we're going ahead with the investigative work that Counselor Vandersdale has suggested we do, and I agree with that, that makes a lot of sense. But this is really to simply finish phase two environmental assessment, and then eliminate Oak Park Road Extension as an option. And then still have staff go forward with their investigation, so that's why I put it there, and I just simply want to make it clear to the public that Oak Park Road is being removed as an option, otherwise they're not going to be as sure as we want them to be, that we're no longer looking at this option, thank you.
Thank you, so. Tonya, do you have, so, Counselor Carpenter, you get that wording to Tonya, do we?
Yes, it, it was the first, the first rendition of this, Tonya, it's where we strike out after environmental assessment, and then we strike out then to place the, that struck, struck out. And, and that the, and stays there, so it'll say, and that Oak Park would extension, and we strike out on hold in order to fully explore, or sorry, the environmental extension be removed as an option, and we strike out on hold. Thank you.
Good, so we have some speakers lined up here, Counselor Sloss, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, is it possible the clerk could put this up on the screen? I, I think I agree with this, I, I agree with taking Oak Park off, but, but I I think what I heard was, but we'll continue to do the environmental assessment that might show other ways of achieving the same results, though. But I'd, I'd like to see that before I vote, I'm pretty sure that's what it said, but we were taking out and substituting and moving around, and I wasn't sure where it all landed, so I'd kind of like to be able to read it before I vote. I, I think the intent's there, I think, I'd just like to see it. Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that, yes, I can support that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, next speaker. Counselor Vans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, committee members may recall a recent announcement by MPP Wilbama. Announcing a class of environmental assessment on Highway 24 North, and that's a long time in coming. It's a, it's a piece of work that had, was necessary for quite some time, and he's been paying close attention to that. When you leave the highway 403 and you head north on Oak Park, you are appointed at Cambridge. I think it's worth to have a discussion with the county in terms of the regional transportation master plan. Discussions that, that are very much needed in order to serve both of our, our needs, the population of the city of Brantford and the population in the county. As a discussion that has a further reflection on our future and how we move traffic better through this area, not just for today or tomorrow, but for 50 years from now. The same argument holds true for heading west on the 403 and, and heading south on Oak Park, which is part of the Oak Park Extension. The minute you leave the highway, you're headed straight for the airport. So from directionally, you're headed straight for the airport, from my perspective. I'm going to ask council to not support this, this amendment, because what it does is it effectively removes the option of having the regional conversation with the county of Brant and finding alternative methodologies for coming off of Oak Park Road. And not having the option of connecting to the airport potentially, and not having the opportunity to connect with 24 South. Which logically, looking forward again for the next 50 years. It makes an awful lot of sense to connect Highway 24 South to Highway 24 North with an intersection, interestingly enough, that has been upgraded by the MTO to the tune of millions of dollars. So, before we throw the baby out with the bathwater on this one, I think it's extremely important to follow through on the, the current studies that are underway. But, meet with the county and other interested parties to make sure that we've exhausted all of the efforts on a regional transportation master plan, so perhaps this amendment may be appropriate at another time. I would like council to give our, our staff and county staff and other interested parties the chance to have that conversation about a regional transportation master plan before we completely eliminate an, an extension or a variation thereof. So I look forward to the discussion, but I, I would prefer that we wait on this option, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Counselor Rattler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't feel that we've fully explored all the options at this point, I, if we had, I would certainly support this amendment. But we haven't explored all, all the options, and I'd like to see some discussions with the county before we make this decision. So if it were worded differently, that, that included those options. I would support it, but I, I, right now, I will not be supporting the amendment, thank you.
Counselor, Ben Tilburg, you're up next.
Well, that certainly is a line in the sand, if I've ever seen one, for putting an end to discussion on, on a road. And let's have that discussion, you, you know, we, we have talked about relief for the growth in West Brant. And that growth is going to continue, and it's been the people in West Brant who have demanded access to the highway. At the same time, people in West Brant have desired access to the industrial complex, that's on Oak Park Road and Hardy Road in that area. They're going down Brant Avenue using lot, and there's lots of traffic congestion. If you're down in Eagle Place area, you would realize during the last flood how paralyzed we were as all the bridges were closed, no way to get to the other side, and so it was discussed that we needed a bridge high up in the air, that does, won't be affected by any of those ice storms, so I mean that's the solution, the problem, significant public desire not to have that road go through and not have that bridge built, and not to have that traffic released, and often coming from the very same people who are demanding access to the highway, which you know, that's what gets you into a pickle, you've got to come up with a solution, so. Do you need it? You need something. And when you're looking at, at canceling this, which is what I think people were under the impression that, that, that the previous motion did, it was, it was a, a derelict of sorts, that we could look at what comes through. You know, you have to come up with something sooner or later, and if you want to kill this, and that was the, the desire of the public. And they were praised, and they're thanking us, like, I got tons of emails saying, thank you for opposing the Oak Park Extension, and like I say, sometimes you're cutting your nose off despite, on your face, to do something like that, but you're agreeing the public will. And there were certainly some very significant issues with regards to how it would transgress through the, the cemetery. And of course, there could be all sorts of ways around that, but we weren't going to look into those anyways for, for, until the next council, for reasons I'm not exactly sure, other than it was a public pressure not to do so. So like I said, look, people in West Brant, you need a way out, and if the council is, believes that there is a way not using Oak Park Road, which I can't see. I think, I think Oak Park Road's the best way, but not necessarily the popular way. And we've decided to do that, when you want to look at the alternatives, and we have not had the discussion on the alternatives. The one thing that this resolution does is it makes sure that you can look at alternatives, but guess what's not on the, on the table? And that is the Oak Park Extension as created by the BSAR, which is some 40 years old. And quite frankly, I heard staff being criticized for something that was 40 years old, look, they walked in, as many of them probably weren't even born when these plans were devised. And so it comes into our lap now with plans that are all delayed, and the, the increase in construction in West Brant's going to continue. So our problems aren't going to go away, no matter how we vote, whether you're voting in favor of this amendment or against it. And I just want to leave it at that, people, you may not want this to go through, but by goodness, it probably is the best, worst solution out there. And we probably aren't going to have it.
Thanks, Counselor Ben, Tilburg, you came right underneath the wire there. Next. Counselor Intes.
Thank you, Mayor, through you, I think to staff, I'm not sure who can answer this, there's been a lot of good points made tonight. But the amendment is taking Oak Park Road Extension off as it is recorded today, does that eliminate any version of a partial use of, you know, Counselor Tilburg, sorry, Counselor Vandersdale talked about a section of it possibly being used for regional transportation. And can something come back in a different version that is just not this, is it, like, I don't see this removing options, and I agree, we haven't explored all the options yet, so I'm not sure if anyone can answer that, and while staff is deciding who gets to try and answer that. Back in January, I had put the request in, you know, have we looked at transportation needs now, and how they've shifted, and how they've changed through COVID, how many people are now working from home? And I know that was something that was, was upcoming and may not have been done yet, but that may change, you know, I, I think we're right, the building's going to keep building, but do the, do the transportation needs change, thanks, Indy.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Davis, through you. So this, this corridor is, is part of the, the OP, you know, it's a long-term protection plan, or protection area in the new OP, because of the employment lands that are coming up to the north and the connections that are needed. So, removing it in that sense, I'm also trying to understand as well, because the amendment to the amendment, my update was maybe we explore options of what will happen if this was to be removed as an option, and, and maybe report back. But I think we do have to keep it in, because that's where the, right now, the, the environmental assessment is, is being conducted for, put on pause. The other is, we've got development charges and growth-related dollars going towards this as well. So we're expecting this growth in the area from the OP as well as from our development charge. So I'm not sure, maybe Russ or Joel, maybe on the development side of things, but the corridors is very important in general, until we do explore other options, either regionally or with the county. It's important to keep this corridor on hold on the side, so that we can always come back to it as well, once we've explored everything, either to not move forward with it, or, and, and move forward with something other option that we've explored, or to have it there once we've explored all the options, to be able to come back to it, so. It might have been a little bit of a confusing answer, I apologize, but it's.
It sounds like you might have a bit of the same question as, as, as I do, if it comes back in a different form, is it, is it not a different option, I, I don't know how different it has to be, once we remove this, is, is I guess what I'm asking, so, but thank you, Indy, I appreciate it.
And to, to like, Oak Park Road right now is being connected through the TCA lines, it's being dead-ended there. So, any, it's going to stay as a dead end in that development until anything happens south of it, or if the bridge is extended, so, any alignment with those developments and those houses in, in, in that area would have to be in another location if it's not that corridor, or the bridge connects over and then it swings somewhere else through the county with partnerships in the county. So there's just exploration that needs to be done, according to the resolution that was in front of us.
Thanks, Indy.
Okay, next, Counselor Wall.
Thanks, Mayor Davis, has the amendment been moved? It's on the floor, we're speaking to the amendment now, or we're speaking to the whole resolution?
We're, we're speaking to the amendment, but it's kind of hard to talk about the amendment without talking about it's very hard to dissect the two, which is why I've not made any rulings.
No, I appreciate it, sorry, I was looking for, you're doing a great job, Mayor Davis, I couldn't imagine having to sit in that big chair, okay, so. Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to be honest, as one of 11 representatives here, and I mean, it's kind of my thing for today, this doesn't make any sense to me, I don't know why we're sitting here talking about this, it seems very blurring the lines to me between what we should be doing and what we shouldn't be doing, so ultimately, I have a question for staff. If this council right now said we weren't going to do the Oak Park Road Extension, and then the election happens in 2022, and 11 brand-new people got elected, and they said they were doing the Oak Park Road Extension. They're doing the Oak Park Road Extension, right?
So, through you, Mayor Davis, Counselor Wall. It would be the will of council at the end of the day, if we reconsiderations were part of the clerk's speak to that and the decisions and how they're made, but my, my experience from my, my days is that it can, can come back forward in front of council.
And that's pretty much, again, maybe for clerks or for any staff member that wants to answer. Any decision that this council makes can be undone by the will of council, as long as it's procedurally correct and doesn't breach any provincial mandate or legislation. This council ultimately is the ruling body for this community, based on community input and community will, could undo or do. Right, like, that's how it works, that's government, we're a democracy, if the majority of this council makes a decision, then it happens, so I don't understand, we already made this decision. And now, a council wants to move an amendment to imply that we're solidifying the decision that we already made, that it could ultimately be completely undone or changed by the will of this council or any other council afterwards, it seems like this is a motion designed to cause more confusion in the public, more confusion in the media, and ultimately make the attacks that are happening on this council. By certain, yeah, well, you know, go ahead. Wonder where motive is being viewed here?
I'm going to rule, I think he's talking about the impact of it.
I am talking about the impact of this motion, so we have incredible media partners. And I very much appreciate the hard work that they take in trying to take the decisions that we make in this room and explain it to the public. But even after the articles come out, even after the television interviews are had, even after this goes through the social media machine. It comes out the other end very confusing to members of the public. And what I'm trying to do as a representative, especially for the people that I represent in the community. I don't support the Oak Park Road Extension based on the feedback of the people that I represent right now. So I will not, as a council, vote to support the Oak Park Road Extension. But once I'm done my term, if I don't get elected in 2022, or if I don't run in 2022. The person who takes my seat, and the questions and decisions and input from the community members then could change, and this could go through. So I believe that this amendment means nothing. Respectfully, I don't agree with the amendment, I don't agree with the motives of the amendment, and I'm done talking about it.
So next up, we have Counselor Martin, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Hans. If, if we take this off the table as an option. Do we lose the ability to charge development charges for this?
Yeah, I was just going to pass it on to Joel, but with the, with the DCs, yeah, you're pretty much expressing the intent that this is not a growth related or development related project. Um, but Joel, you can um, add to that.
Uh, sure, through Mr. Maris. So just to add on to what Indy was saying, currently the capital program, the growth related capital program is being built on the recommendations that are part of the transportation master plan. So if Oak Park Road Extension was now off the table and council expresses its intent to not proceed with that project, we would be looking to replace that project with more of a perhaps a generic uh, growth related transportation needs project, but being unsure what that is and what the cost of that might be. The Oak Park Road Extension is currently a significant project in our capital plan and is really driving uh, the transportation DC rates currently. So we would need to take that back and look at what alternatives we could include with very little information at this point to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. And, and that's why I won't be supporting this amendment. Uh, to lose those development charges would be a huge blow to the concept of development, paying for development. Um, it's, it's a huge problem. A lot of the people in, in the new West branch are complaining about lack of services. Well, part of the problem was the development charges weren't high enough years ago when that was being developed in order for us to provide the services that they want. And now if we do this, whatever a future council decides is whatever the option is for replacing Oak Park. There won't be the money there to do it and they'll have to start all over with trying to raise the funds. And the, the, the area will be developed. So there won't be any development charges to pay for it. So we need to keep this on the books for now. Until we figure out what kind of option we're going to go forward with. Because if it ends up being Oak Park extension ten years down the road and there's no money in the kitty to build it. It's going to be a huge burden on the taxpayers all the way across the city. And that's not fair. Development needs to pay for development. That's why we push to have development charges as, as high as we can to, to pay for the infrastructure that's needed for development. So I, I think this amendment is, is ill conceived and I won't be supporting it.
Counselor McCurry.
Uh, Mayor, thank you very much. I, I agree completely with my wordmate, Counselor Martin. Um, I can appreciate the sentiment behind this amendment certainly, and I can understand why the mover has brought it to us today. Uh, he is seeking to offer clarity to the community. Um, however, I, I hear the arguments uh, in favor of maintaining the resolution as brought by Counselor Vanderstelt. And I think there's there's sensibility and reliability to that. Um, I've made it quite clear to people who have contacted me uh, from the nether regions of Ward One across the river and in the Southwest that I do not support the Oak Park Road Extension. I believe I've responded to every single person that's messaged me about that, even though a lot of them were sort of form letters. They were from the heart. Um, so I, my, my stance, I think is quite clear on this. I think Counselor Vanderstelt's resolution, as before, is unamended tonight. Speaks to what this council has in mind. And when one considers um, that uh, and I, I thought Counselor Wall's comments were extremely telling and extremely on point that um, there may come a day when a future council, which will not include me, by the way, might vote to go ahead with this project. And if that's, if that's their thinking at the time, and if that makes sense at the time, uh, they can very well do that regardless of what we say or do here today. This is what we're doing in our time. There may come a time when a different council will make a different choice. And what happens tonight with respect to this amendment is neither here nor there in terms of what that council may decide at a later date. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I'd say this, that um, I think it's all about routes and I think Counselor Van Tilburg is correct. There is a need for there to be a transportation linkage between West branch and our Northwest and our four three. And there's lots of potential options. Many of them obviously run through the county. This is uh, the current routing for the Oak Park Road Extension. I'd describe it now that we know what we know as ill-advised, shall we say. Uh, the planning of a cemetery that was done around the planning for a freeway or not freeway, but a transportation linkage would have been done ten to fifteen years before the cemetery was considered. That was that ill-advised too, but it in some ways, you know, cast to die in terms of this route. And clearly there I, I think, I think uh, our engineer is quite right. This, the, the intent of this resolution, not this amendment, but the resolution is to fully explore with the county other possibilities that uh, could involve different routes and would essentially mean surfacing the airport area. And we really don't know what it is that the county has in mind for that. And it could well be that that makes sense to them because that route would lie very much in the county. We just don't know. We haven't had those discussions and I wouldn't certainly want to foreclose that option of a discussion with the county, which I think is what Counselor Vanderstelt was saying. So uh, and then of course, there's the whole issue of the development charges by law and uh, trying to maintain the integrity of our development charges by law because that potentially involves hundreds of millions of dollars for this community. And not something we want to jeopardize at this stage. So I'll call the vote then. Uh, let's see. Counselor Intest.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm, I am struggling with this vote because without us having clear answers to what can happen with this down the road. I, I don't want to close options off. Um, and you know, we're talking about um, you know, having those conversations with the county, et cetera, but you know, maybe we should have done more of that before we got to the point that we're at now and, and had more options ahead of time. So, so I'm, I'm finding this a difficult decision because there's definitely very good arguments on both sides, sides of this. Um, I, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Sless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's certainly gone back and forth and it's been a wholesome conversation, but at the end of the day for me, uh, I, I said I, I would not support the Oak Park Road Extension as it's been presented. Uh, so the only way I can demonstrate that that's what I mean i- is to support not having it being part of the conversation. Um, I you know, a duck's a duck and, and this is a duck and, and we've got to call it that. Uh, it is what it is. And it, it's something that um, that I haven't been supporting. Uh, like Counselor McCurry, I've had a ton of email on this and I've responded again to every one of those indicating that I would not support that. So if, if I'm not going to support it, why would I vote to have it go forward? Um, I, I'm starting to lose the logic wh- when I get to that point. So to me, you're either in or you're out. Uh, it's, it's one or the other. It's, it's not sort of maybe kinda. Uh, it, it's, it's one or the other. The whole idea of the EA is to explore options to achieve something. Um, but this, this EA seems to be totally focused on, on one option and, and, and that's really all we're getting. The others were brushed over, but they were, were not delved into. Um, I, I don't know uh, how we direct the folks doing these EAs to, to go in deeper on other other alternatives, but um, it was very clear from the beginning, everything I read and, and I attended all the public information sessions. And it, it was very apparent that, that they were going to do this and we were doing the study to justify what we were doing as opposed to the other way around. So um, I, I'm going to support the uh, the amendment because I think it, it's important that, that people understand exactly where we, where we, where we land on this. And I think it's important that uh, we do what we say and we say what we do. And, and to me, I said, I won't be supporting it. So I, I would I would, it would be foolish of me to um, support just kind of looking at it. Uh, we're either looking at it or we're not, uh, and I'm not. So I'll, I'll be, I'll be supporting the amendment to take it out.
Uh, Counselor Vanderstelt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I'm uh, I'm loathe to do this, I find it necessary. Uh, I would like to, uh, unless everybody's finished speaking, I'd like to try an amendment to this amendment.
Okay, got in mind.
Uh, the amendment I have in mind is to pursue this option that Counselor Carpenter has brought forward in a timely fashion after the regional transportation discussion has eliminated Oak Park as a feasible option.
Tanya, did you get that?
Uh, no, I did not. So if we could have Counselor Vanderstelt uh, do that. So I, I was starting to, to type and certainly capture the amendment as it was being verbalized, but let's uh, if we could hear it one more time, that would
My apologies, Tony. I, I should have given you some forewarning. Um, I just want to ensure that um, the amendment that Counselor Carpenter has brought forward with regard to Oak Park uh, is delayed until such time that the discussions with regard to regional transportation master plan with the county have exhausted all options associated with the Oak Park Exchange. Is this a deferral? Sounds like a deferral.
Yeah, I'm it's almost is a, it's almost a referral in the sense that it requires certain information to come forward that could well result in a different resolution. I think that's the intent of playing. Almost I think a referral. I think Counselor Vanderstelt.
Uh, for, for clarification purposes, uh, Mr. Mayor. I understand the intent behind the motion, behind the amendment. My concern is that direction has not yet been given to staff, although council has agreed to transportation master plan and included it in many of our documents currently. That the option to carry out that discussion and the direction to do so has not yet occurred. So I, I'm not certain, Tanya, whether or not it is a referral, deferral, or an amendment to amendment. But the bottom line is we need to have that regional transportation master plan discussion before removing this option from the table.
Yeah, I really, I really think as Chair, I really think it's a referral you intend. Uh, because coming back out of the discussions of the county, it could, it could be something different. So I'm going to take it as a referral. While you, you can move it, but I really think it's a referral you've got in mind. So unless you think I'm completely wrong.
Uh, I, I, my concern is that I, I want to place specific onus on staff to carry out the conversation. Uh, it's a, it's a very specific direction with regard to this intention.
So you're, you're moving a deferral then of the amendment. And deferring until uh, sometime after staff have had their discussions with the county regarding the free transportation plans. I'm just trying to help with the wording so that we all know what it is.
Certainly. So a deferral of an amendment uh, would not actually be in order right now. So I'm trying to look at the warning to see if I can get an amendment to the amendment to capture then Counselor Vanderstelt's wording within the amendment, but because of the complexity and the subject matter, um, I'm just, I'm trying to capture that without because the refer defer situation is actually not procedurally in order right at this moment.
Okay, well, so are you going to craft some magic here and show it to us?
If you wouldn't mind buying me a little bit of time. That's exactly what I'm working on to see if I can get the language to land that um, for the amendment to the amendment.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for the amendment to the amendment. I know it gets us into difficult waters, but I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Well, um, we don't have, uh, we don't have the amendment on the floor yet, but people do have the right to speak for a second time to the amendment. And so we'll take it on that basis. Well, staff may be able to prepare an amendment that you can put forward. But anyways, let's go to uh, I believe we got Counselor Carpenter. If you're second speaking on your amendment.
Thank you for speaking. I was, I moved the amendment to make it clear. I thought at the last and Counselor Sless made it perfectly clear. And that's why I moved the amendment because the public was saying that this is just smoke and mirrors. Council doesn't really, they've just deferred Oak Park Road to the first quarter of the uh, the fourth quarter of the first year of a new council. They haven't actually said, no, we're not doing it. They've deferred it in order to get
My order, Mr. Mayor, he's speaking to the motive of the original motion. I think that's correct. If you're talking about motives, uh, if you want to talk about what you're trying to clarify, that's fine, but
I appreciate the different rulings, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so just to be clear, uh, the, the resolution did, it deferred Oak Park Road. It was clear. It's in the resolution for private load. So the reason that I moved the motion to delete it so that the public would really clear that we're deleted. As Counselor Sless has just said. He said, either you're for it or you're against it. This is drawing the line of sand to be clear about it. Now, if you are for it, then, and you want to explore options to maybe put it down the road and put it in, then voted against my amendment or maybe uh, allow an amendment that actually is contrary to my amendment. Uh, when, when my man takes it out, maybe you'll accept that amendment will actually be contrary uh, by taking, giving
On Counselor Carpenter, we've not seen the amendment yet. So I think
Oh, we haven't. No, we haven't. No, I still have the floor. Thank you. Uh, so I just wanted to be clear and to be clear on the development charges. If we're collecting development charges on something that we're not going to build, we should probably be giving those development charges back anyways or deferring them to the other projects that are going to deal with the traffic flow problem that we're talking about. And we talk about some members of council said they would never do this because uh, we would lose the older charges. I remember a counselor and he knows who he is, who moved a motion to delete chair and cross extension from the capital budget. Which had a price tag of in, in that neighborhood, I think around back then around thirty-three million dollars. That's no longer in our capital budget. Are we collecting development charges for it? Did we give them back? I'm not sure what happened with all those development charges, but that's happened in the past from the same counselor that says we shouldn't be doing that. So uh, I just uh, want to say, I'm just trying to be clear. Look, you can move whatever amendments, whatever deferrals you want, but if you're not for Oak Park Road, you vote for this amendment or you won't. Or you'll vote for something else.
All right. So any other speakers? Tanya, do you have something that you might be able to give to Counselor Vanderstelt?
My computer ill-timely froze, so just bear with me a moment. So the warning for the amendment to the amendment, based on that my computer is now frozen. Melanie's trying in the background to get hers to display. And we'll display it as soon as we can, but it would look like the Oak Park Road Extension review be conducted after the discussion on the regional transportation master plan with the county of Brant has been exhausted. So that amendment to the amendment would take out the, be removed as an option in order to hold to fully explore. So it's that's the section of which it would be amending of the amendment. Mayor, you're muted.
So Counselor Vanderstelt, is that your is that your motion or your amendment to the amendment?
I'm sure there's more people digesting this as well.
Sorry, that's the original from Counselor
That's, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it. Thank you.
My apologies. Just give us one moment. We're, we're, we're working through a tech issue on the clerk's side of this. My apologies.
My sincere apologies as well, Tanya.
So is that what you had in mind? That's bad, so.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, when we speak, when we use the word review, uh, be conducted. I'm a little unclear on the wording there. Essentially, we're talking about uh, options prior to.
Well, what would you, what would you like? What would you like to put on the floor?
Um. Sorry, I understand we're cobbling these things together at the last minute, and I apologize for that. Um, I, I think as it stands, uh, it embodies what I'm trying to say, uh, in placing a a, a, in essence, a deferral in place. So uh, thank you. I, I can support this. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second or for this amendment to amendment?
In lieu of Counselor Weaver being here, I'm seeking a second or.
And I believe Counselor Wallace said he will second it.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, the, my point of order is this is completely contrary to my amendment, which is to take it out. This is to keep it in. And that's contrary to my resolution, my amendment to keep, to take it out.
I'm ruling that it's in order.
I'm, I'm sure.
Yep. All right. So any discussion on the amendment to amendment? Okay, Councilor.
Sorry, my mute, my mute wasn't working. My unmute wasn't working. Um, I, I can't vote in favor of this amendment to the amendment, because the way it reads, and maybe this is why Counselor Vanderstel was some, was kind of hesitating on the words, is it, is that after we have the regional transportation, we're just going to continue on with the Oak Park. That's, that's how it reads to me. Um, so I can't support the way that's written.
Uh, Councilor Martin.
Thank you. I won't be supporting this amendment. I think we're better off to just go with the motion that was originally put forward instead of uh, trying to whole as bold as make changes on the fly when we don't have advanced wording and we're not happy with, with the wording that's come forward uh, for the Second Amendment. So I think the cleanest way to do it is to just vote down both amendments and stick with the original resolution.
All right, uh, Councilor Vantilbor, to the amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, I, I can't support this as an amendment to the amendment. I almost think this is, this is a separate amendment to the original, not to this one there. They're, they're very distinct. I mean, it's almost you're like, it, I feel like I'm vote, by voting yes, you're voting yes and no, and by voting no, you're voting yes and, and no to the opposite. So I don't think it's clear. Uh, I, I, the intent is clear on what wants to be done. I don't think it's clear. Piggybacked onto this, I think it should be separated if wanted to and put onto the original. So I won't be supporting this as an amendment to the uh, amendment. I think.
Uh, Council McCurry.
Mayor, thank you very much. I, I'm disappointed that my wordmate channeled former Counselor John Starkey by saying holus bolus, but did not add ad hocery. Uh, two of his favorite, uh, two of his favorite sayings. Uh, and um, Counselor Starkey was, um, Counselor Starkey was very astute. And um, you know, I, I think what we're into here is, is a, um, it's an exchange. It's, it's like an exchange of strategic nuclear weapons. Uh, at the end of this, we're going to be a half an hour further down the road without having accomplished anything other than um, sowing greater confusion within the mind of the public. And um, I, I, um, you know, we, we've heard counselors, I, I'm not talking about tonight. We've heard counselors before who talk about motives for things. I never do that, as, 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 as the mayor knows, but um, I, I, I've got to think that what's before us tonight came originally in, in the form that Counselor Vanderstel offered. Uh, that was clear enough. Um, if there are people in the community that want to, that want to light fires and um, throw a little gasoline on it, we can't stop that. And no matter what we do here tonight, heads are going to explode over, over um, things that other people are going to say about what we've done here on social media. It's not something we can prevent. Uh, I think the people that corresponded with us, as, as um, Counselor Slass and I both said, I think they're pretty clear on where we stand individually on this issue. And I think that um, you know, we've um, we've, we've done nothing but um, but sow more confusion every time we engage in another amendment here. So I'll not be supporting either amendment. I'll be supporting Counselor Vanderstel's original offering, which came to the table tonight, which I thought gave sufficient clarity of our intention. And um, that's, that's what I'm going with, Mayor. Thank you.
Council Ball.
I don't think I could say it better than Council McCurry did. You got it. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, not seeing the raised hands. Uh, Tanya, would you please take the vote on the amendment to the amendment?
Councilor Van Tilburg, awaiting your response.
Wow, it's like everything's freezing up on me. I haven't got anything on the screen here, so I'm going to vote no.
Certainly, I'll mark that for you, and I can certainly appreciate the freezing at an ill-timed moment. The amendment to the amendment has lost on a vote of two to eight. Those voting in favor, Counselor Vanderstel, Counselor Wall. Those opposed, Counselors Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin Carpenter, and Toski Van Tilburg, Mayor Davis.
So we're left with Counselor Carpenter's amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment from anybody who hasn't spoken twice? Seeing no raised hands. So, Tanya, if you please take the vote on the amendment to the resolution.
The amendment to item twelve point one point sixteen, the Oak Park Road extension, has lost on a recorded vote of four to six. Those voting in favor, Counselor Slass, Carpenter, and Toski Van Tilburg. Those opposed, Counselor Vanderstel, Utley, McCurry, Martin, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, if we can take a vote on the resolution, please, the original resolution.
Item twelve point one point sixteen, Oak Park Road extension is carried on a recorded vote of nine to one. Those voting in favor, Counselor Vanderstel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, Counselor Toski.
All right, let's move then to the Social Services Committee report. There was one item requested, twelve point two, the new affordable housing development on seventy seven Colbert Street West, Counselor Vanderstel. You asked that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to um, Deb Schlifter, with regard to the build in West Brent. It is, uh, it's, it's exciting to work with the other uh, the other level or levels of government on a project like this. And uh, I'm wondering if you could just give us a bit of an update that the uh, the area um, residents are asking questions about it too. Um, it's an exciting process for us. It's not the only one. There's more on the way, but can you give us a bit of an update on what the, uh, what the timelines look like and what we should reasonably be able to, to see in the next little while?
Yes, uh, through the mayor, um, I, there, the update, there's several things that have happened since the last council meeting and since the committee report. Um, number one was the official announcement that was held uh, last Friday, where we were able to now uh, share where the funding is coming from for some of the capital cost, one point two five million, coming through the Social Services Relief Fund, which is a provincial funding uh, source. So we are now able to share that information. That's very good news. Um, the other piece of information is that we had a, a pre-consult um, meeting with planning and other staff uh, on the fifteenth of June. And so we're able to get um, some feedback from a, a, a number of staff regarding sort of next steps along the process. We are, uh, the third piece is, um, we've done a um, Phase one, Phase two environmental assessment and found some contamination and were able to um, finish the soil remediation piece. And so that is being backfilled uh, as of this week. And so that allows us to go to the next stage, which is the record of site uh, condition. So uh, moving along uh, different milestones along the way, um, we are aiming for completion before the December thirty first, two thousand twenty one timeframe.
That is wonderful and good news. Thank you so much for your hard work on this. Uh, no, no project comes without its little hiccups. And uh, thank you for circumnavigating him and the, and the, and the brief report. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Martin.
Thank you. Through you to staff. What was the nature of the contaminants found on the site?
Through the mayor, um, the site, uh, as you noted from the, the report, was a previous rail line. So it was decommissioned by CN, and so it had um, some soil contamination because of that. Um, that is the piece that you may have seen some trucks in that area taking out soil. And so now that has been completed and remediated.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't contamination from the, the person who was using it as, as parking for their business.
No.
Okay, predated that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I see another speakers. I'm going to, I'll speak to this briefly, just because I like to, I want to thank staff. I mean, we know the housing situation in our community is in crisis stages. This is an important project. It'll bring on much-needed units uh, for a particular subset of our waiting list that, that, that needs attention and needs uh, housing directed to them, which is fifty five plus single adults. And I want to say this to staff, the, you know, we've talked all the way through the pandemic about our city staff being nimble and innovative, and that's true. And this is a prime example of that. The, the governments, the upper levels of government, they announced the funding for this program and with the shortest of timelines that I've ever seen. And staff were aware of it. They knew there was this property that the city owned that could be used for this. Uh, they knew it had to be modular build to meet the requirements of the upper levels of government. And I really, I really admire how quickly they responded, putting this together, uh, really at the last minute, not their fault. Uh, but I'm very optimistic. We'll soon see this. Well, let's just say that it's very promising. And again, um, my commendations to staff for seizing the opportunity here that was provided by this very quickly announced rapid housing initiative announced by the upper levels. So great work. Let's, let's carry forward and hope we can see construction start this year, or if not, then certainly shortly after. So with that, I'll, I'll call the vote on this. Uh, please, Tanya, would you take the vote on twelve point two point two?
Twelve point two point two, new affordable housing development at one seventy seven Colbert Street West, Brantford update has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor, Counselor Vanderstel, Utley, Slass, McCurry, Martin Carpenter, and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, we're going to move to community, the whole county development report, couple of items separated there. Uh, first to your, you've made that request, Counselor Vanderstel. The first is twelve point three point one, the downtown community improvement plan.
That is correct and correct, Mr. Mayor. Um, moved by myself, is it amendment, Mr. Mayor, uh, moved by myself, seeking a second or. Counselor Utley, I see, has his hand up. Um, the written minute reasons follows that clause each of item twelve point three point one downtown community improvement plan uh, financial impact none. Twenty twenty one, three sixty nine, be struck and replaced with the following, that staff be directed to report back to council by early twenty twenty four with an assessment of the uptake and related impacts of the three streams of property tax increment-based grant program, including the proposition of new housing units created that are affordable with potential program modifications to be recommended if needed to facilitate all program objectives, including the provision of an affordable housing, uh, of affordable housing units following the initial two years of the program administration. And speaking further to it, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I, I think when we, when we specifically read that sentence, with potential program modifications to be recommended if needed to facilitate all program objectives, uh, one of the reasons why I think this is so important, um, I'll, I'll come back to Counselor Slass's words. He often questions what affordable housing truly is and, and how many layers there might be of it. There are many layers of affordable housing, and there, there's many um, groups of people that we're trying to serve. Um, this uh, amendment serves to better um, make use of that, uh, of that ideology and make sure that we're not just serving one part of the population who needs affordable housing, but all of them as well. So what this does is it adds another option for developers come in to uh, to work with us to better, better determine and, and better set those, uh, those monthly rates uh, in a number of different uh, areas and capacities. So uh, I'm, I'm hoping to uh, to see support for this uh, inclusion within the CIP. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, uh, Councilor Van Tilburg.
You know, uh, we've got the CIP, and I believe Counselor Vanderstel was going to bring another similar re, a resolution when, when the gray fields come up. And I guess it's great to quantify what's happening. One of the, one of the concerns I have overall, though, with our afford, with our affordable housing incentive programs is that we're concentrating them. They should be across the city. There shouldn't be specified to a certain zone. And that's what we've done. And I just want to point that out, that what we're doing is right, but we're also, that, that program, whatever we have, should be wherever we're building, every new development, whatever. And right now, we've said we're, we're going to concentrate it in the downtown of Brantford. And then in Grayfield, Grayfields, of which there are more across the community, but again, significantly more in, in the word five. So just so you know that the way we've laid this out for, and there's nothing wrong with this incentive program, but that we're applying it in a manner that is going to be clustering into certain zones. And, and you know, that's how we are right now. I, I do agree that we get to analyze each and every proposal. So I want to keep that in mind when somebody comes up with, with different styles proposal. But it is important to quantify what, what we come back with in twenty twenty four. So I have some serious reservations. I, I would love to see something that breaks that free, so that where we have a development. Affordable housing shouldn't be restricted to the fact that we want to increase intensification to downtown or increase intensification to brownfield. It should be that we want to provide affordable housing, no matter where, where it is in the city, no matter what builds coming forward. And uh, unfortunately, this little ad that was brought in, while, while good. Um, good to have affordable housing. It's been very selective, and, and I understand the intent when this was, this, this was came in as an amendment originally. Because it wasn't in there, came in, I understand the reasons why people want to push on that, but if we're going to push, um, push a little wider.
Tanya, can I see that wording again? I'm sorry. Unfortunately, this wasn't distributed beforehand, so. I know. Good, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. Tanya, please take the vote. Tanya, please take the vote.
I have a problem with my iPad. I vote in the affirmative.
I'll mark that for you, Councilor Martin.
Thank you.
It's moving around.
The amendment to item twelve point three point one, the downtown community improvement plan has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor of Councilors Vaynerstall, Utley, Slass McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Ventilburg-Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, let's move then to, well, the amendments, we have the amendment as passed to the amended resolution, staying discussion. Saying none, Tanya, would you please take the vote on the amended resolution? Twelve point two point two, no, twelve point, twelve point three point.
Item twelve point three point one downtown community improvement plan as amended has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor of Councilor Vaynerstall, Utley, Slass McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Ventilburg-Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, so let's move then to twelve point three point two. Councilor Vaynerstall, you asked this to be separated because I think you have a similar resolution or amendment.
I do indeed, Mr. Mayor, another amendment, very much along the same lines, seeking a seconder again. Counselor Van Tilburg, Mr. Mayor. And the amendment reads as follows, that clause J of item thirteen point three point two Grayfields Community Improvement Plan, financial impact none. Twenty twenty-one, three seventy be struck and replaced with the following. That staff be directed to report to council by early twenty twenty-four with an assessment of the uptake and related impacts of the three streams of property tax increment based grant program, including the proposition of new housing units created that are affordable with potential program modifications to be recommended if needed to facilitate all program objectives, including the provision of affordable housing units following the two, the initial two years of the program administration. And speaking to it further, Mr. Mayor, I think to Counselor Van Tilburg's point on the previous issue, oh, there disappeared weight. Well, no, it's okay. I got it here. Oh, thank you, Tanya. Well done. With potential program modifications to be recommended. Okay. So I think we knew going into the Grayfields CIP that it was a bit of a moving target. This is the first kick of the can. And we will probably in the future be adding additional Grayfield properties into this, this area of study and this area of opportunity, which further, from my perspective at least anyway, gives future councils the ability to, to commit to areas for affordable housing that are not restricted to the downtown CIP. So this is another reason why I think it's important to include this into the Grayfield CIP so as to create more opportunities in other areas of the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion on that amendment? Saying none, Tanya, would you please take the vote on this?
My iPad's messing up again. I vote affirmative.
Thank you, Councilor Martin. I'll look after that for you. The amendment to item twelve point three point two being Grayfields Community Improvement Plan has carried in a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor of Councilors Vaynerstall, Utley, Slass McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Ventilburg-Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, any discussion on the resolution as amended? Seeing raised hands, Tanya, would you please take the vote on this?
Item twelve point three point two being Grayfields Community Improvement Plan as amended has carried on a recorded vote of nine to zero. Those voting in favor of Councilors Vaynerstall, Utley, Slass McCurry, Martin Carpenter, Ventilburg-Wall, Mayor Davis, noting Counselor Antoski was not present at the time of the vote.
Thank you. Tony will now move to the next item, which is twelve point three point four, the development application process review update. I believe Counselor, you asked for this to be separate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I separated this in a conversation I had with Counselor McCurry. And we're not convinced our mandate is completed yet. So I, I believe Counselor McCurry will have an amendment to, to bring forward. But certainly, I, I think we've made some good headway with this, with this task force. But I, I, I would like to, I just feel we kind of left without tying up all the loose ends. And I'd like the opportunity to, to be able to do that with the, the rest of the task force members. I, I certainly, although, you know, there's been progress made, I would certainly like to hear back from builders and developers to get their feedback. You know, have we closed the loop on this or are we partway there to closing the loop on making our, our planning process as efficient as we can possibly make it? I want to thank staff with this. They certainly made, made great efforts into looking at different ways, more efficient ways of processing site plan approvals. And I think that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful start. But anyway, I'll leave it at, I'll leave it at that and leave it to Counselor McCurry to introduce his, his amendment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McCurry, you've got your, no, Counselor Carpenter, you're next.
Thank you. I, I'm glad that I had a conversation with Counselor McCurry as well. And I'm glad that Counselor Utley has heard that last weekend, to me, the whole, I raised this issue. Why was this being canceled? Why, why is the committee being absolved, dissolved? And, and the CIO said he did it, we were doing it for efficiencies. And I think it'd be more efficient, quite frankly, if we adjusted our mandate to make sure the forty recommendations were actually instituted. And I think the committee should stay in place until such time as the mandate, mandate, the new mandate being that all forty recommendations get implemented. It's, you know, it was one of the best reports I've ever read in my thirty years on council that really addressed all the concerns that were raised in, by the public on this issue and developments. And we were addressing most of those issues. I, I want to address all those issues. And so I, I will all support any amendment that keeps the committee in place and change man and adjust the mandate to, to get the work done that we said we would do. And I, I know it's, it's a lot of staff work, but we'll meet when, when staff need us to meet. And we'll have some questions about timelines. When are things moving forward? The message was that we're open for business and we wanted some clarity in our rules and regulations. So again, best report I've ever seen, I was certainly, don't want to disband the committee when the committee did such good work. And I know some members keep forgetting I'm on the committee, but I've been on the committee since the very beginning, even through two transitions of the name. Thank you.
Counselor McCurry, you have an amendment?
I have, Mayor, in, in the fullness of time. I, I just want to, I just want to say that in the flush of seeing a reduced workload when this came to committee, I, I quite embraced this, but the two fellow counselors who've been on this committee in both iterations, both Counselor Carpenter, of course, who could forget Counselor Carpenter? And I find it hard to believe he's been around thirty years because he looks just as young as the day he started. So, but, but I, I think they're quite correct. Both, both John and Richard are quite correct that there is a volume of work that remains and the committee should remain in existence. And, you know, we may not be as active as we were previously, but I, I think what, what both my fellow committee members said is that there's work that remains to be done, regardless how much there is and when it needs to be done, we're quite happy and quite willing to do it. And I think the committee has a role to continue and I would hope that everybody would embrace the three of us who seem to just want to keep working. Thank you.
So do you have an amendment?
I thought I'd introduce it on my second speaking opportunity.
Oh.
Yes, I'll, I'll introduce the amendment now by your lead, Mayor.
I'm granting you leave to bring your amendment. I'd really like you to bring it, okay? Let's move on.
So the, the amendment would simply be to scratch item B to remove it? Or alternatively, by your leave, we could simply vote against it at your choice, Mayor.
And so that was, that was a portion of the resolution that disbanded the committee, right?
Yes, clause B.
Yeah.
And I see, Tanya, you popped up. That means you must have something to say.
I did. Thank you so much through to the mayor. Julie also dropped up, who knows a little bit more about this topic than I do, just regards to the in-depth of the mandate. But from what's being communicated to me is that actually an amendment to remove clause B would not be in order. So you could either take the path to have B voted and, and it fail if that's the will of council. However, that doesn't address the mandate expansion. So I believe that's where Julia's comments are going to come in if you're agreeable, Mayor, to answer that question as to the term of the mandate needing to be expanded so the work can continue. Cause as it stands today, the mandate is completed.
Yeah, Julia, can you give us some clarification on that?
Sorry, muted there. Sorry, through the chair. So I was the clerk support for this task force. And it was built actually with a very specific set of terms of reference that were agreed upon, upon receiving the consultant to the city of Branford to do the review. And effectively, the, they were to review all phases of our development process and present a report of all the suggested items. And the final report was to come in twenty twenty, which KPMG was able to adhere to. So as it stands currently, the mandate has been completed, as have the terms of reference. So there's a couple of options in regards to this. You can choose to amend and expand the mandate if you know what you're looking for in regards to the mandate or direct staff from the office of the CIO to go back to the task force and sit down and suggest a potential mandate and timeframe associated with their new mandate.
You're talking about a referral? Is that what you're talking about?
No, not at all. You can just direct staff to go back. So you would still strike clause B and instead direct staff to go back to the task force to come back with a finalized mandate.
Yes, quite a bit of ad hocery going on today. So, but I think it would help us with the ad hocery if we could see the original resolution. Would you be kind enough to do that? And that'll help, I think.
I'm wondering if Tanya, Tanya has a, Tanya has a reserve, Mel does, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so in view of that, I don't think we had your amendment. I don't think it was seconded. Did you want to consider something different?
Counselor. Sorry, Mayor, are you addressing me?
Yeah, I, because I, we were going back and forth whether you want to make an amendment.
Well, yes, we, we do want to, we do want to continue to keep the red tape committee on the books. Its mandate may have been completed, but the committee, I don't believe the committee recommended its disbandment, which is the typical way in which committees go into the, the round file. So.
Can I be so bold, Counselor McCurry, as to make a suggestion?
Well, I, I believe that would be the first time you've been bold, Mayor, and I'd be most anxious to see that.
All right. What if, what if your amendment was that, that be deleted and be replaced with a direction that the issue of the task force's mandate be referred back to the task force for review and consideration, recommend, and further recommendation to the council, something like that. I think, I think that captures what you're trying to do, isn't it?
I believe that's what I intended, Mayor. Thank you.
I'm, I'm always glad to be of assistance.
And Counselor Carpenter apparently is the seconder.
Okay, so with that, any discussion on that amendment? All right. Why don't we put that to the vote then? Tanya, can you take the vote on this?
Mr. Hutchings has his hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Hutchings.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, yes, I just, I think rather than sending it back to the committee, I think what, what, what what Julie was suggesting, you said to myself, and I'll bring forth the recommendation for the expansion of the committee as I'm hearing from the counselors, Counselor Carpenter, Utley and McCurry, that we'll look at expansion, I'll bring that forth as good staff will. And to Counselors Carpenter earlier, it wasn't just about efficiency, it was about, this was the most efficient way to bring it forward, not to get the committee again. So I'm hearing loud and clear, the committee wants to keep going. My office will put together, if you want to do that, a staff CIO will be directed to bring to the committee expanded mandates to finish off the project, the, the, the development application process project.
Well, Counselor McCurry, you've had some advice from the CIO.
I believe, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that that's exactly the wording I was about to suggest.
You're making a friendly amendment.
Yes, what, what the CIO said, I hope the clerk managed to capture.
I mean, agree.
And Counselor Carpenter, you're agreeing as a seconder. Is anybody, anybody objecting to this friendly amendment? Yet so physically raise your hand, seeing no such objection. All right, why don't we, I think we've got it up now in front of us. Yep, I think that's what the CIO was recommending to us. So not seeing any further discussion on this amendment. Tanya, would you please take the vote on this?
Counselor Martin, just waiting for your response.
I voted yes once and then it popped up again. I voted yes again, but it's just spinning its wheels, so.
So let me see if I can mark it for you on this side. The amendment for item twelve point three point four, the development application process review update has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor of Counselor Vaynerstall, Utley, Slass McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Ventilburg-Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, so. Counselor, you raised. Your hand.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, speaking to the amended resolution, are you?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Counselors McCurry and Carpenter for their input for this amendment. I look forward to, I hope you both will continue on that task force. I, I don't think, I think most of the heavy lifting has been done. And we've got a good roadmap to improve the, the process. But I, I think a key part of our expanded mandate will be to reach out to businesses and builders, big and small, to determine, is it having an effect? And I think that's, that's a critical part of, of our mandate. So thank you, Mr. Hutchings and all the planning staff for doing a great, and, and engineering for really working hard at this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution as amended? Saying none, Tanya, would you please take the vote on the amended resolution?
Mayor Davis, just waiting on your response. Item twelve point three point four, development application process review update as amended has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor of Counselors Vaynerstall, Utley, Slass McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Ventilburg-Wall, Mayor Davis.
Now I move to item twelve point three point six, the Mohawk Institute Save the Evidence Counselor Wall has conflict on that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Tanya, would you please take the vote on this? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the vote on this side?
Item 12.3.6, Mohawk Institute Save the Evidence, has carried on a recorded vote of 9 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselors Vandersell, Atlee, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, until Mark Wahlmer Davis, voting Counselor Wall's conflict.
Right, so we have one last separated to deal with from the committee reports. That's 12.4.2, the High Water Bill Reduction Program, Council Vandersell, you asked for this to be separate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Daniella and or Selvi. I'm just wondering when we will be working toward the changes in communication and the and available options for people should should we come up against another, you know, 800 to high water bill situations in the city of Branford? Are we, you know, what are we going to add in? Are we going to add in phone calls or text messages or friendly visits with flowers or something like that to help people understand what's what's happening to their to their little toilet flapper? Or and when are we going to to roll that out, Daniella?
Well, through the mayor, we're going to roll it out as soon as possible. So we're, we do have to hire an additional staff person. And that's all in place, ready to go if council so approves. And we're hoping by August the 1st, we will be able to start emailing more aggressively, calling. We're working on technology to get texting in place. That won't happen most likely until September, October. But we are anxious to get started as soon as possible to be able to communicate more effectively. The monthly meter reading won't start until January.
Right, thank you, Daniella. And I know this has been severely affected by COVID and all of its restrictions and everything, but so this position that we're hiring into comes comes out of water rate budget, correct? It's not an additional load?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and will be will we be accompanying this with a somewhat creative and upbeat kind of social media campaign through my Branford? Is it something that we can we can put a positive spin on and say, you know, check your check your flapper kind of a thing?
Yes, I know that Selvi's group is definitely looking at communicating in different ways or more often, and hopefully in some more creative ways. I know they've already reached out to other municipalities to get some additional ideas and how we can obviously bring this issue more to light and inform, you know, our constituents on how much water water can be wasted through a simple thing like a leaking toilet. So definitely, that's part of the plan as well.
And this will come at a savings as well generally with the stoppage of all of these leaks. What was it, 800 last last year alone?
Right, we had about 800 that we were aware of. We suspect there are many more that people are not noticing that they they have higher than normal bills because they've always had high bills. So we are hoping that we can reduce water bills just uniformly across the city.
Thank you. And thank you as well to the entire team, Danielle, Selvi, everybody else involved. You know, we had a couple of incidents where this came up and you moved quickly and you responded in the middle of a pandemic and you put together a plan. And thank you because it it serves to protect our source water. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Carpenter?
Yes, thank you from myself and my board constituents, Danielle and Selvi. And I know we talked about this, well, it must be almost a couple of years now, we talked about this problem and how we looked for solutions, and we had robust conversation, though Council of Antilberg was involved when we were looking at trying to find these solutions. I just want to give you something to think about going forward is these utility companies that are working in our community and digging up our front lawns and then dumping topsoil and seed on our lawns, some way that they could be paying for the water bill that the customer now has to water that to make sure their lawn isn't destroyed. And on top of that, when the city does construction work, hires contractors to do roadwork, and we tear up the boulevards and it gets planted with substandard soil and grass, that leads the residents be somehow compensated for the watering that they're going to have to do to maintain the lawn, the boulevard lawn that was part of their original lawn, just something to think about going forward. Thank you.
I think I saw a affirmation of that.
Well, that's more that's more under Selvi's domain, but I'm sure she's listening and will.
We will take that if you threw, Mr. Mayor, we'll take that forward back and I'll talk to Mr. Hans about this and Selvi and a couple of the matters been raised at a last committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Tony, would you please call vote, take the vote?
Counselor Martin, just waiting on your response, but since your iPad does not want to be helpful tonight.
It's spinning its wheels. I vote affirmative.
Thank you. I'll mark that. Item 12.4.2, being the High Water Bill Reduction Program, has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselors Vandersell, Atlee, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, until Mark Wahlmer Davis.
All right, so I'll move to item 13 resolutions. There's only one resolution on tonight's agenda. And that is to receive the CEO COVID-19 emergency update for the month of June. So Councilor Sless, I understand you're prepared to move this. Please confirm that. Read the resolution and state your seconder.
Sure, if I could get up on the on the screen, that report 2021-443, titled CAO COVID-19 Emergency Update 62221, be received. Move on myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counselor Atlee.
Okay, any discussion on this, Counselor Carpenter?
Yes, to our CEO, Mr. Hutchings, I just wanted to ask the question, when did we stop the tax forgiveness during COVID? For people, was it only for six months? I know we had it, it was part about the mandate. Did that stop in six months?
We did it back in 2020, and Drell's on the line to give the exact days, I believe it was three to six months, but Drell, can you give the exact time period?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, it was a period of six months from October 1st until October 1st.
Could I get an understanding of why we ended that that tax penalty forgiveness?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it was something that we did bring to council for consideration, and it was for a six-month period of time. And when that expired, when the final tax bylaw was brought forward for billing in 2020, there was no consideration at that time to extend beyond what had already been approved.
And if I could just add to the treasurer's comments as well, it seemed to be many, not an issue for arrears, we and as well as many other municipalities had not incorporated since that time, the same rebates. And so it seems we seem to be coming out of COVID that part of time. It was not an issue for many people. And so we 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 ended the program.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight maybe the the and I think I thank the committee for what they're doing. I see that I read the reports. There's a lot of information there. A lot of things are discussed. I guess what I've received concerns from constituents and from businesses, businesses that are having a difficult time, they have lost a lot of revenue. And the interest, they're not able to sometimes not pay their taxes, but they're able to keep their business afloat and they're paying a penalty. And then you got the moms who are the kids homeschooled, they had to buy them computers, special computers to be on homeschool, those that didn't have them. And then they had to choose whether they pay their taxes or to do that. So I would like us to consider the hardships that are happening with those that gone through COVID are still going through it and those that may have caught COVID. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Counselor McCurry, you're next.
Mayor, thank you. Do I understand correctly that we have, we remain having suspended the 24-hour parking regulations in the city of Branford?
Yes, we had up to this point. I'm asked, Mr. Hans, to give the details of that.
Yeah, through Mr. We are still using discretion on the 24-hour park because the work from home is still there, although the stay-at-home did or ends, so we will be reviewing that.
I I hate to ask this, but can you explain why working from home would require someone's car to be in the same place for 25 hours?
So through the chair, at that time, with the folks working from home, they're they're not going to work. And there were some requests that we did hear through residents that they would require that parking and not be penalized for for having their car and working from home if they're if they're required to stay at home. And I'll have Mark Jackman, if he can, come on to speak a little bit more about the the enforcement side.
Let me let me just ask that the next time the EOC meets, if that could go on the agenda. I've heard a number of complaints about folks whose whose neighbors are parking cars in front of their homes for days at end. And I got to think, if you're working from home, you don't have you don't have travel involved, so you get even more time to be able to move your car once a day. So if you could add that to the next agenda and have some discussion about that, please, guys.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the EOC meets tomorrow at 8:30, so it's a, we will, that's on the front of the mind, and we'll make sure that's raised and discussed tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the vote on this side?
My hat is spinning its wheels again. I vote affirmative.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. I'll note that. Item 13.1, the CEO COVID-19 Emergency Update 4062221, has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Those voting in favor are Counselors Vandersell, Atlee, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, until Mark Wahlmer Davis.
Okay, so I complete the resolutions. We'll now be moving into the last portion of our meeting, which your notice is a motion, where two are being, there is a request to waive the rules in Turner. Would otherwise be a notice of motion into a resolution. Before we launch into that, you know, I'm here at City Hall and the two support staff, Tonya and Melanie, but they don't have anyone else to relieve them here. So I'm going to call a five-minute recess because I think this next section will probably take a long period of time. Let's reconvene in five minutes. Okay, I think we're, we're going to reconvene. And again, we're now moving into notices of motion. There's eight on tonight's agenda. And the first one, councillor, while I understand that you want to present that as a resolution for tonight. So of course that will consider require a motion to waive the rules. So why don't you put on the table then your motion to waive the rules?
So the motion, the way the rules and the entire motion, correct? That's right. All right, moved by myself and seconded by my wardmate, councillor Van Tilburg. That section fifteen eleven, five and fifteen three twelve of chapter fifteen of the city of Branford municipal code be waived in order to introduce the following resolution without prior notice of motion and without having been considered at a committee of the whole or standing committee. Whereas downtown Branford is facing serious economic and societal issues, stigma and challenges due in part to escalating poverty, homelessness, substance use, vandalism, social misbehaviors, crime and the fallout of the COVID nineteen global pandemic. And whereas outcry for a program to address these issues is at an all time high. And whereas without deliberate and intentional support and focus, downtown Branford could face irreparable decline. And whereas improving the health vitality and resiliency of the downtown is critical for achieving our vision of the downtown to be a place that signals our city's economic vibrancy and attraction, tells a story of who we are as a city. Be a center for culture, arts, music and entertainment for our city, be a center for academia. Is safe, secure, inclusive and welcoming for a broad diversity of people. Offers strong local and tourist attractions, provides opportunity for business to succeed. Offers compassionate care for those who need it and is safe and attractive neighborhood that people choose as their home. Now for be it resolved that A, the corporation of the city of Branford establishes the downtown Branford improvement task force. B, the composition of the task force is comprised of the following, the mayor of the city of Branford, four members of Branford city council, the Branford Brant member of provincial parliament or their designate, the Branford Brant member of parliament or their designate. A representative from the following organizations and institutions to be selected at the discretion of the membership as well as identified alternative, the downtown Branford B I A, the Branford Brant Chamber of Commerce, the downtown central neighborhood association, the Branford Public Library, Wilford Laurier University, Conestoga College, Branford Police Services and the Brant County Health Unit. And that this task force can at any time submit a recommendation for council's consideration that other stakeholders be invited to join the task force. And C, the purpose of the task force shall be to facilitate the development of a safer and desirable downtown by collectively working together to prepare an action plan and or strategies for the purpose, including short and long term steps to address the undesirable behaviors and activities that are occurring in the downtown. More effectively supporting vulnerable populations collectively included, but not limited to the homeless, those with substance use disorders, mental health and addictions and enhancing tourism, art, culture, music, entertainment and community events to attract people to the downtown to visit and live. And D, to achieve the completion of their mandates outlined in class C, the task force will provide a forum for conducting a series of public meetings to receive and hear deputations and briefs regarding ideas and strategies to achieve the primary purpose of the task force as set out in clause C. Invite written submissions from municipal departments, groups and individuals and other community stakeholders interested in developing a safer and desirable downtown. And thereafter assess all ideas and strategies and prepare a recommended program for council's consideration of concentrated action to achieve the objectives. Above setting out priorities, targets, timing, staging and implementation teams. And E, that administrative support for the task force shall be provided by Community Services and Social Development Commission. And F, the task force shall report directly to city council with a final report in quarter one, twenty twenty two. However, the task force may at any point prior to quarter one, twenty twenty two bring forward any recommendations for short term solutions to be considered for immediate implementation.
So we have the to the waiver. All right. To the waiver, councillor.
Yes, I just want to speak to the waiver. I think the, the, the issue is now all received emails from the B I A how important this is. So we should, we need to waive these rules and move this forward as soon as possible. Downtown needs our help and they need it now.
Councillor Vanderstel to the waiver.
For more reasons I'll discuss later, it is imperative that we deal with this now. And I support this moving the rules. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other discussion on the waiver, Tony, would you please take the vote?
The motion to waive the rules for the downtown Branford improvement task force item has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Atlee Soss, McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Mayor Davis.
So councillor Wall, would you give oppression? Let's put, we can put your resolution on the floor. You don't have to read it, just confirm.
Yes, absolutely. Downtown Branford Improvement Task Force moved by myself and seconded by councillor Van Tilburg. And I'd like motivated.
All right, so councillor, well.
Thanks. So this has been in the works for a long time. As somebody who's been and worked and owned a business and lived and grew up in the downtown. This particular motion and task force is not to say that there are not a lot of incredible people who are already working right now to make downtown a place to live and love and be prosperous and downtown's great place. It's my favorite place. Spend almost all of my time there and I will continue to do so. A lot of people have met and talked and had conversations about the downtown over the last twenty five years, at least, I don't know, for as long as I've been in the downtown. So in regards to this motion specifically, I have a couple of thank yous I want to make. First, thank you to Mayor Davis for committing so much of his time to do research on how we were going to pull this off because this is no small feat. And I know that he struggled and had many conversations with our staff about it and other members of this council and ton of other people. So thank you, Mayor Davis. C A O, Brian Hutchings, you're the best. I really appreciate you. You got a lot on your plate and I really do appreciate how much you care about our downtown. Huge thank you to all the staff. I know you're probably not looking forward to the amount of work this task force is going to put on your shoulders and I don't know what I would do without you. Huge shout out to Economic Development, Public Works and Social Services who work tirelessly all the time. Focus on our downtown and the rest of the city. The B I A, of course, I've been a member of B I A long before I was on council and the B I A is a huge supporter and proponent of the downtown and a representative of businesses that are there. The Neighborhood Association, the downtown central neighborhood association, you guys are amazing. I love you. Your volunteers are great. Conestoga and Laurier, our security, police and emergency services. I mean, you guys are on the front line dealing with some of these societal issues that we're dealing with and I couldn't be able to do it without you. So anyway, forgive me. While acknowledging what this motion seeks to do, I still, in line with the reopening of Ontario, welcome to our downtown core where there are incredible people and businesses who would love to see you. And yeah, there are some issues downtown, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't come down and visit and be a part of making your community a better place. Downtown is a beautiful place filled with history and culture and heritage and businesses and music and art and so many great things. And it takes a community to build a community. So please be a part of that task force or not, our downtown needs you to be proud of it, to partake and to come down and enjoy it for what it is. Last thing I'm going to say, we're probably almost out of time, but I was asked to give an elevator pitch of what this task force was. So quite simply, this task force is an opportunity for anybody who cares about our downtown to get together and to identify what the concerns and issues are. And then for us to play matchmakers with solutions to those issues and concerns and and acknowledge what the best practices are for those to be resolved. And then ultimately, anything that we can't play matchmaker with to identify where the gaps are and to create solutions for the gaps. And then lastly, to be a lobbying voice for support from our provincial and federal government to get the resources and support we needed to deal with the societal issues and the ramifications of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So I hope for support from this council. And I feel like, was it Bernie Sanders? I once again come to you for support for the downtown core, but here I am. The downtown is the heart and soul of a city and let's work together to make it a safe and prosperous place for anyone and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Carpenter, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we all received the letter from the B I A with their concerns of what's going on in downtown and looking for solutions. And I contacted, soon I got the letter, I contacted staff and I said, could you please help prepare a resolution so we could get moving on this? And I received a call from you, Mr. Mayor, saying that you were working on it and I do appreciate that, that you were working on wording as, as, as we speak, spoke. And you provided me with a copy of that and it's changed somewhat, but it's still a very good resolution. And I offered my services then and I offer them now to be on that committee. And I want to remind members of council that we're here back when the casino first came. The funding from the casino for police officers, six police officers were supposed to be funded from the casino to stay in our downtown core as part of the perceived problems that we thought we would see from the casino coming in our downtown. And we had also provided funding for mental health and addiction services from the casino back in those days. And that was to make sure that the addiction then was, of course, gambling, but there's other addictions that the money could have been used for and it sort of got chewed away over the years, but no, no one's fault, but council after council found other other means for what they could thought were more important for that money. And in hindsight, I think that was an error on our part. We should have kept that funding for policing services to keep a strong police presence that are downtown core. And, and clearly, mental health and addiction services were are sorely needed in this community, real, good ones. I mean, follow up, wraparound services that don't really exist. And we're not, not being fun like they should by the federal or provincial government. So I, you know, we, that's downtown is the heart of our community. If the heart's sick, the community's sick. We have to maintain what is the downtown as the center of our, of our community and all communities. So it's very important that we make sure that, that this is maintained. We can't expect, can you expect to send your children to university in Branford when you go downtown and see what you see? Those, there is a lot of issue. Businesses are having very difficult times. Businesses are leaving because they're frustrated with the, the lack of, I think that even the mayor's plan, I think was six hundred thousand dollars for community policing was, was a good one. We should have endorsed that. Look in hindsight, it should have went forward. And maybe it still can with, there is a big surplus in the casino fund or the, sorry, in the revenue funded, it went into the council's contingency fund, one point two million dollars almost. We could certainly take some funding out of that and get to work on what was originally a pretty good idea for the downtown core to keep it safe. So I wholeheartedly support councillor Wall and councillor Van Tilburg's resolution. And I offer my services to be one of the members on the committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're unmuted, Mayor. I know I'm having trouble turning it off. So next councillor McCurry.
Mayor, thank you very much. I think the community is probably somewhat aware of what the issues are downtown. Some of this has arisen due to actions by other levels of government who have seen fit to not proceed with criminal proceedings and not to hold folks in remand. And now we have a plague of crime downtown that's committed by people who have a disconnect with this community and that needs fixing. I won't go on at length, Mayor. I think we're all aware of the problems. We're all in heated agreement. Like councillor Carpenter, I would like to be considered for a position on this committee. I think I can make a contribution.
All right. Councillor Ellie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to put my name forward to serve on this, this, this committee. A couple of us, including the mayor, received a message today from a business owner downtown. And she surveyed about eighty seven businesses. And she said, here's the summary and the most of the most voiced concerns as we spoke with merchants and residents. Windows and doors broken by vandalism, crime on the street, using business entrances as public washrooms, rummaging through garbage bags and leaving a mess on the sidewalk in the street, sleeping in doorways, driving the wrong way on a one way street, Colborne, Alfred, Charlotte and Queen. Excessive speeding and noise down Colborne and Dullesy. Vacant buildings on the north side of Colborne, the west end. People afraid to come downtown, drug use, urination in elevator lobby area of the market center parcade. Used needles on the street, safety concerns for elderly, back at building residents, students, customers, families going to the library. Merchants on Colborne and Dullesy did not want to lose parking. Merchants and residents want to be heard, but felt that no one has been listening to this concern. So we've got you know, this, this is nothing new here. This has been going on for years and we really need to make this committee work. Otherwise, if we're not committed to it, we may as well pack up before we, before we even start. But I think from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of commitment to making this work. And I thank councillor Wall for bringing this resolution forward. And, and to his secondaire and councillor Van Tilburg. There are, you look at, you know, the, the people that really use downtown a lot. Are not, not the people that we'd like to see. And I try to be careful in the way I, I word that, but you know, the homeless, people with serious issues, they seem to be very, a very visual, negative visual aspect of our downtown. And that's, we really need to make this work. So I'm, I'm all in. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Vanderstel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This really was, over the last while, a unfortunate, a horribly unfortunate perfect storm with not being able to provide service because of COVID. People not going downtown or anywhere for that matter because of COVID. And you know, a very needy but high risk population occupying a space. And unfortunately, that is, that is all many people see and it is, it is so unfortunate that we have this, this horrible situation where businesses and individuals who are now starting to come down to the core are no longer comfortable. However, this is, this is not, and this is not a made in Branford problem. This is not a made in Hamilton problem. This is the, the conservative estimates of homelessness in Canada are two hundred and thirty five thousand people that, that are recorded over every year that, that go homeless without a home. We've been, we've been inundated because of the growth cycles here in Branford. We've been, we've been inundated because of the growth cycles here in Branford. It is something that has been systemic in our culture for an extended period of time, despite the fact that we are one of the most wealthy and free countries in the world. It's, it's a, it's a tragedy of, of the human condition that we have to deal with that. I, I support this, both counselors, Van Tilter and Wolf, bringing this forward and applaud them for doing so. I do have a very small item of concern. To my count, there are five counselors now who are willing to sit on this task force or committee. And I'm wondering whether or not both counselors, the move or in secondary, would consider opening those parameters to allow more members of council who should desire to serve on this, on this committee. Through you, Mr. Chair, I assume.
Well, we can easily, we're going to have to have some amendments to put people's names in there and we could also, as we deal with that, depending on how many volunteers are, we can add to it. The original, yeah, I'll leave it at that. So any, any other comments, Counsel Van Hestel?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor. Outside of the fact that I would love the opportunity to serve in, in whatever capacity is necessary on that committee.
Yeah, I think we'll get into that after the first round and we'll, we'll see who's interested and we may have to extend it. And I'm I'm sure there would be a willingness to do that. So next speaker, Counselor Slus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I saw a video on YouTube of, of a restaurant owner in our downtown trying to move along folks that were loitering in front of his restaurant and it got quite wily in this interview and at, at the end, one of the loiterers approached him and spit upon. That's the kind of things these folks are tolerating to try and make a living. And then we stand there saying, please pay your taxes. It, I, I think they deserve better. They deserve more. It, it's, it's very disheartening. I, I go to a number of downtowns in other cities and the proliferation of what's going on in ours is not. Well, it happens in other cities. It's not it to the extent that it is in our downtown. And I don't know why that is, but we seem to have, have really been inundated with, with folks that, that have, I think, shown up in our city. I don't think they were raised there and, and I, I, I think there's a lot coming in. I don't know whether we've made it too sweet, we've made it too simple. But there, there's certainly a problem and I think a lot of it is an outside problem. I have a couple of concerns about the committee and, and they're good concerns, I guess. The, the one concern is the size of the committee. I hope that it can remain nimble enough to be able to react to things that we're not losing meetings because quorum can't be met because there's a committee of twenty or whatever, and, and now you need eleven people there. And you might not get them there. So I don't know what happens. I guess you have a meeting anyway. So that type of thing, I, it, it kind of concerns me that I would hope that people that, that get involved are committed people that will show up to the meetings. Laurier and, and, and the college really concerned me, Conestoga. They, they have a huge investment in our town. As do we in them. And if this is what the campus looks like, when, when a prospective student comes with his parents or her parents to tour the campus, it's frightening. I, I, I don't know what would happen. I, I know what would happen if it was me touring a city that I wasn't familiar with, with one of my children when they were going away to school. I probably would have stroked that one off, off the list. Because it, it, it's not somewhere where you would want to send your child until we start to do something down there. And I, I think it, it's never too, too late to start. But I think it, it's a huge job and it's not going to get fix itself overnight. But it's, we've got to start on this and I would hope that we can make large advancements very quickly. I'm from an era, you couldn't wait for Friday to come and be done school. So you could go downtown and buy some french fries and walk in a big square around the downtown. And, and that's what pretty well every kid in this city did growing up and it was a very safe place. And today, you, you don't see that happening. And, and I think when, when you go down there and you drive around and you look around, for good reason, that's not happening. You wouldn't send your, your child alone down there to go to a restaurant to, to, to get a milkshake or whatever we did in, in my day. Because it, it, it just doesn't look safe. Whether it is safe or not, it's another question, but it doesn't look safe. The appearance is bad. So I, I'm really pleased that this is forward. I congratulate the two ward counselors for bringing this forward. Anything I can do, I, I would be more than happy to do as well. But as I said earlier, I do have concerns about the size of the committee that it can be nimble enough to react quickly and to call meetings and to get forums. Hopefully that can all be done and we can get this under control very quickly. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Van Tilter, you're next.
I'll be happy to serve on this committee. I have many sleepless days because of the events going on in our community, particularly in the downtown. And by that, I mean, as a shift worker, my phone rings during the day, during the morning, throughout the day, into the evening because of the behaviors happening in the downtown. Our most vulnerable populations are at risk in the downtown. Young women with infants, small children, being accosted while trying to just be in the downtown. Whether it's going for a stroll with their children or whether it's going to the bank or going to a store. You have to care about else people and what they're trying to go through because they are not safe going downtown. This is, somebody says this is not new. Well, I'll tell you what, this is new. And it's within the last few years new. The cultural behavior and antics going down on into downtown is new and unseen like we've ever had before in the history of this city. And the answer to that, where I come from that is because it's the businesses that have been here for thirty and forty years who would never have to call on these issues, but they have in the last two years. The problems are beyond their control and these are businesses that have had significant experience in dealing with behavioral problems that might come into their premises or around their premises. And quite frankly, the city has had lots of experience with certain behaviors, but not at this scale and not at this level. We have no choice but to address this. This is and I was told once before, one person is not going to solve that. Thank you, Mayor. You're absolutely right. And the drafting of this resolution, I've seen the praise when Counsel Walls put it up. He's got it on Facebook. I suggest you look at it. And I've seen some criticism. We're going to get some criticism, but I'm going to tell you what we're not going to do is we're not going to sit around and do nothing. And for the last couple of years, Mayor Davis knows this very well, how much our hands are tied. If I could just go and do something, if they gave me the power, believe me, I would do something. If he gave Mayor Davis the power, he would do something. There are certain things that we don't have the power as a municipal counselor, part-time counselor, in a single full-time mayor to address these issues. The bringing in of the MPP and the MP, perhaps they don't know the seriousness of what is happening. Counsel Van Hestel's called it the perfect storm. Whatever it is, it is an epidemic. And we need to address it. I absolutely want to be in the committee. I, 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 I'm open to having other counselors on this committee, as many as needed, but you if you want to know my dedication for this, I'm already getting sleepless nights. It's one of the reasons I can't act on some of the other more important things that the city deals with because we are bogged down like quicksand, like swamp land. And having to deal with the constant recurrence of problems from behaviors happening in the downtown. Now, there are some solutions out there and that's for our task forces. And I'd like to see some of the things that our task forces can break down and do and accomplish in short order. There are things that we can tackle so that this, so that while people like say, oh my gosh, this is going to be an uncompanyable, slow-moving iceberg. There are going to be some elements on it that we can address and address quickly. And we're going to pull out all the resources. I know back in some previous recessions, they used to have rapid response teams when crises came out. We have a crisis. Every counselor here knows it. That's why we're talking about this tonight. They know the concerns that we have about the perceptions and having drawing students into the downtown and what they see. Counsel Wall knows that we need to generate the activities in the downtown in order to have, which we've not been able to do through COVID, that is opening up. There, we do need people with all different skill types in order to address this problem.
Where can you wrap it up in fifteen seconds?
I think, I think that people understand where we're coming from and what we all wish to do.
Counsel Rintos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the same with, as, as most of the councils here are happy to be involved in any way that I can contribute. Also with some concerns of, you know, not wanting to make it too big if, if that slows things down, but will help in any capacity. We definitely have three layers of responsibility here. Without enforcement of the issues, the problem continues. So that's a different level of, of government. Without financial supports and programming and, you know, national strategies, we're going to struggle. So also another level of government. But we also have some things and, and sometimes it's the simplest things that we need to pay attention to. It's not always the great big things and we have responsibility. So, so when we take, when we take benches out of downtown because we don't want to invite a homeless person to sleep on it, we also take a bench away for people who want to go and have their lunch on a bench or spend some time downtown. When we cut the budget and remove flowers from downtown, we create, or from anywhere in the city, we create our own broken window syndrome. For anybody who's been in the city a long time and, and you look back to when we were communities in bloom and you picture what the city looked like when you drove around or came into the city. It looked very different than it did now and we were all talking about it. So it's not, it, it is not just the, the, the physical activity, but it is the physical presence that, that we, that, that's our responsibility. And that sounds silly and, and you know, some people think all of that doesn't matter. But those are the kind of things that bring people to our downtown and bring people to our city who want to purchase houses and pay their assessments. Right now, we don't have that. So, so this is where our financial help comes in, along with our supports and financial help from the other levels of government. So, so, and, and sometimes the very things that need to be done are counterintuitive to people. So what we hear all the time is, I don't want to go downtown. I'm afraid to go town, downtown. Which is the exact opposite of what everybody needs to be doing. And Counsel Wall talked about this earlier. Get your friends together. Everybody go downtown, spend your money downtown, make it bustling, walk around. The more, the more positive activity you have there, the stronger your community becomes. So, so again, yes, there are some very big issues that need to be dealt with and, and, and we need those partnerships from other levels of government, but there are also some very, very simple things that I think we sometimes tend to overlook because the problem is so big, we, we believe that all of the solutions have to be big. And so that's where I think our responsible, our, our responsibilities lie as, as a municipal government. We do have some things that we can do. And I, I think a lot of those solutions are going to come out with a lot of the players downtown and, and, and again, don't, don't balk at those, those little things because they are the face, it's what creates the vision of your city and, and what creates how, how people feel about the city and being there. So thank you. Happy to serve in, in any capacity required. Thank you.
Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been said that this is a problem made worse by COVID and it's true, it's made worse by COVID. But it didn't start with COVID. It started before that. We saw it before COVID hit. And I think it, it kind of centers around the influx of methadone clinics. It's been a real problem since it started and it's not something that we can deal with. So although I share Counselors Plus's concern about the committee being too, too large, I'm quite happy to see the representative of the, the MPP and the MP being included because we need some changes around the methadone clinics. We either need the ability to limit the number that we have or we need the, the province and the, and the federal government to ensure that the communities around Bradford have to take methadone clinics as well. Because when Counsel McCurry and I wrote Riding the Trails the other day, we saw a taxi from another community dropping off a vagrant behind the civic center with all his possessions in a couple of suitcases and various other kinds of bags. So when you have other communities sending their vagrants to Bradford, it exasperates the problems here. So we need some changes. The methadone clinics, from what I've heard, don't really help anybody. All they do is enable by staving off the withdrawal symptoms and allowing them to continue to commit crimes, to fund their habit and carry on in ways that we don't appreciate. And just the same as the so-called needle exchange also enables this activity. We need to make changes to that as well. The Counselor Carpenter talked about mental health. And we were forced to stop funding an excellent mental health program we had in our community because it wasn't up to us to fund it. That should have been funded by the province. Mental health is healthcare. And Rosewood House could not get healthcare funding because the lens is a broken system. When, when the director of Rosewood went to the lens, he was told, well, you're not a healthcare facility because we don't fund you. Which is absolute ludicrous. So until we get some changes to, to funding for mental health, you're going to see this kind of stuff continue. As long as we're forced to have, I think we're up to five methadone clinics in Bradford. This problem is going to continue, no matter what the ideas this committee comes up with. You have to attack the root of the problem. And so by either reducing the number of methadone clinics or making sure communities around us have them, which only spreads the wealth and, and spreads the problem elsewhere. We need to get rid of them altogether would be my, my suggestion. But unless the other levels of government are going to allow us to make some changes to deal with that, then it's going to be an ongoing problem in this community and others. Because it's, it's certainly not going to get better as long as that's available.
Thank you, Counsel Martin. So I think everybody's had a shot, so I'm going to say a few words. Yeah, there's, there's no question that the, the downtown is the heart and core of our city. You know, it holds the greatest concentration of public sector employment. Many of our heritage properties are down here. A lot of the arts and entertainment and, and cultural community occurs downtown. Some of our tourism infrastructure is downtown. We have ambitious plans for to work with Laurier and Conestoga to expand their student base. We, of course, have just spent earlier this evening talking about a community improvement plan focused on the downtown, all about bringing people to downtown. So there's no question the health, vitality and the resiliency of our downtown is absolutely critical to the, to the well-being of our city. It's the, the beating heart of the city. And right now, the heart's not beating very well. And there are a number of causes for it, going back as far as the deinstitutionalization of mental health and, and the provincial and federal governments not putting in place all the services required to support those people. From the opioid crisis to homelessness, it it's a very complicated problem. It has been on the top of my list since I was elected in terms of top priorities and clearly the most challenging issue we have because there's no simple, easy solution. And, and it has, I think, because, well, first I'd like to say it, it's not just a downtown problem. And I don't live in an ivory tower. I live in Echo Place. I've had my truck broken into three times. I've struggled with someone who broke into my garage stealing one of my bikes and had to struggle and wrestle with them until they, the police could arrive. So I live this and I'm in the downtown pretty much every day. I'm usually in my office here at City Hall at least four out of five or six days, the rest of the time working at home. So, and I, every day I'm through the downtown at least two or three times, many times late at night as well. And I've seen the dramatic deterioration that's been occurring, particularly since the good weather came on. And I think this task force, which I spent a lot of time talking to some other municipalities that have done something similar. And in helping Counsel Wall prepare this, it was a labor of love over the last two weeks. I think we've come up with a very good resolution. What I really like about it is, to the point that you were I think we've come up with a very good resolution. What I really like about it is, to the point that you were making, Councilor Sless. You don't want to create this huge forty-person task force. I think we've limited to a lot of the key stakeholders, but it does allow for, I think it's a little bit unusual for our, uh, task forces, public hearings, inviting submissions. So I'm sure there'll be no shortage of some good ideas. And I mean, that's what we need. We need good ideas. We need a commitment by the entire community to address this problem. And what I also like that we built into this is the ability of the task force to make short-term recommendations as they come up. Because yes, the report of a task force can often take four, five, six months. It's great to hear that so many councillors want to sit on this. I'm looking forward to sitting on it as well and working together constructively to find solutions. But I also say this, and in the meantime, I have urged city staff and our partner agencies such as Loria and Conestoga and Bradford Police Services to take the available resources we have right now that are available to us over the next month or two and through the summer to more effectively deal with some of the more visible problems that are occurring downtown. I'm pretty confident we're going to see some results of that improved effort and reallocation and better coordination. It, I, I see it happening and it's happening and it will continue to happen. Because here's the reality, we need, you know, we need a downtown that, um, I see it as kind of. One, you've, you've got to help people struggling with homelessness and health issues. And we hope to meet with provincial, uh, very senior provincial officials later this, early in July to talk about that. But people need to feel safe and secure. That's our primary issue. So that people will come to the downtown, people will enjoy much of what the downtown has to offer. There's some beautiful sections of downtown, a lot of interesting activities. And, uh, and also to encourage people to live downtown. We've just been earlier this evening talking about the Community Improvement Tax Rebate Program. It's not going to work if, if people don't feel safe locating in the downtown. And lastly, you know, we do need to help create an environment downtown that encourages businesses and supportive to them. And I, just one last thing I'd say, it's been a while since our community had a task force focusing on downtown. My research that I think was back in two thousand eight, and that was primarily directed to the focus on physical infrastructure. And we've not, from my research, had a task force focusing on the other issues that are bedeviling our downtown and to many other parts of our community. And this, I think, will be the vehicle to do that, to generate short-term solutions and also those longer-term solutions that, uh, uh, will address those issues. So I can tell you, as your mayor, I'm very engaged in this is, issue. It's one of my top concerns. And Councilor Dan Childsberg is right. I mean, a mayor cannot be ordering people around or the police around. But, um, there is much, and, and it's not just the mayor acting other individual councillors. It's, it's all this working in a concerted fashion to address this issue. And I believe this task force will give us the vehicle to do that. So. I think I would, I let myself go a little bit longer, so I will deny myself a second speaking opportunity. Uh, but anyways, Counselor Wall and then Councilman Tiller.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to everybody for all their comments and in my list of thank yous from previously, if I didn't make it crystal clear. This council and its commitment to every neighborhood, the neighborhoods that you represent in our downtown. I'm thankful for this council. It's a couple of things I just want to point out that I didn't in my first speaking opportunity and have come up from the conversation that's happening around here. And Councilor Martin, thank you for being the one to say it. I mean, you got it. Those problems that are causing our problems and they need to be identified. And I think that's one of the things that the task force is going to do, but ultimately what's going on didn't happen overnight. This has been creeping up on us and, you know, a question that I want an answer to and. Where are the drugs coming from? You know, how are they getting into our community? How are they getting into our province? How are they getting into our country? I mean, there, we need this war on drugs, I guess. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm hoping that we can figure it out. Because there is a drug problem in our community. It's not just the methadone clinics. It's why we need the methadone clinics. It's, you know, guns and violence and other issues, societal issues that are happening in our community. I mean, how is this happening in Bradford? Where is the appropriate funding for mental health support in this community? There was just an article in the paper about a person who went to get help and didn't get the help that they needed. And I don't know, I didn't dive deep into that. It's way outside of my wheelhouse, but I know this. The staff that work for the Bran County Health Unit and the staff that work up in our hospital, they're amazing. But I don't believe that they have the support they need to help the citizens of this community. And where is the outreach? Where are the people lined up demanding more mental health support? Where's the oversight for where taxpayer funding is going? Because as far as I understand it, there are individuals who are provided financial support who have no understanding on how to manage a budget, have no understanding on how to be fiscally responsible. And they're given money and without proper help, that money goes to drugs. That money goes to things that aren't a roof over their head and food in their stomach. And I, I'm not saying that we should live in a country where we, you know, we are in charge of how people spend their money. But I think having food and a roof over your head should be the primary reason why people are provided with support. And then everything else comes after. You have food in your stomach and a roof over your head, a safe place to call home. And I don't know what that answer is. I get so heartbroken when I see some of the comments that are made specifically on social media, but not exclusive to social media. That are made about some vulnerable people in our community. Because at the end of the day, we're all human beings and we deserve respect. We all have rights and every one of those vulnerable people that some people are speaking of in a certain way are still somebody's family member who could still, with the right guidance and mentorship and help and support, be contributing members to society in ways that we'll never know unless we find a way to get them the help they deserve. I don't believe in lost causes. I don't believe that anybody is so far gone that we can't help them. And I know that sometimes that's just me with my rose-colored glasses, but if you watched my rant at the last BIA meeting, I don't know where I would be if I hadn't had that mentorship and support, you know? I hope that this committee will have an opportunity to talk to people who have lived experience. It will work with people who have been where the people we are trying to help have been and have overcome and gotten through it. And lastly, I said it before and I'll say it again because it bears repeating. It is up to this community to build community. We are all in this together. We do need to band together and go downtown and participate in the events and walk the streets and celebrate its greatness and patron the businesses and support the organizations and the community groups that are working for a better downtown. But not just the downtown. You know, that's what this resolution is about, but every one of our neighborhoods has a very amazing neighborhood association that is filled with volunteers who are trying to make all of the communities of Bradford stronger. And it's, I've probably gone over my time.
Not very much.
We're all frustrated with what we're dealing with in our downtown core. But let's not pretend that this can't be fixed because it can't. And I believe that able-minded people who compassionately care, like the people in this room and the members who are going to be on this committee, can get us to where we want to be. Thank you.
Council Ben Childer, second time.
Thank you, Council Wall. You hit on so many key points in that second speech of yours. And, uh, I really hope that others are listening. It's not just about wraparound services for mental health and addictions. People are contacting us through social media. And as, as similar to the, the article that was in Spott, people are looking for help and looking to have a way where they can be removed and extracted from the environment they're in. Otherwise, they're sending them back to the same place. People are telling us this. This is what we're reading. These are things for the task force to investigate and find out how to put all the pieces together to achieve those things. People are saying, I need relief from the constant repetitive criminal activity happening at my location. Because it's constant. There is not a day that they get a break. These are things for our higher levels of government to understand what we need. And, and those will be our long-term goals. There's no doubt about it because that's the stuff that can't happen overnight. But it is certainly a discussion that has not been happening in any way, shape or form. And probably not the way a lot of the, um, best practices are set up. Because we have moved away from a lot of that stuff. And, and when I hear the criminal systems and I hear the mental health system, it doesn't sound like they want to go to these other directions. And I think we may have to break it, break the news to them that in order to get this relief, we need to have a place where somebody is sent for a period of time, whatever is best for them, whatever is suitable for them. And that will be suitable for everyone. But right now, there is little that is happening and, and that's the problem is that every day, it's the same elements and the same people. And please do not blame this on the homeless. My gosh, there's been lots of people that have been homeless. A lot of people that are in difficult situations right now. A lot of people I know that are being evicted for no good reason of their own. It's just because somebody bought their complex and is deciding where to move them out. So don't blame this on homeless. I have seen the videos. I have seen where people comment and say, that is my neighbor or that is somebody that they just happen to be in the downtown doing the same kind of behaviors that has congregated. So there's something else happening there, but it all gives us that same impression. So yes, we do have vagrants. Yes, we do have homelessness. Yes, we do have mental health and addictions. And, and it is overwhelming or we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be receiving all the calls. Every councillor, I'm sure now, has received multiple calls and multiple emails as it has spread. As they know, certain people who go to certain businesses no longer feel safe going to the downtown. We're going to tackle this. Safety, security, we want to get the feedback from the public. In order to help guide us, there's a lot of smart people out in the public too. I think, uh, Council Wall is probably the best on social media to start gathering up some of those results. But my gosh, it is, it is not just one bullet. It's going to be many. But we've got to do something that addresses everything that we need in order to make the downtown safe. Without safety and security, you have nothing, nothing to draw people in. And achieving that, we can do some short-term things. And that's where we're kind of right now, if you think about it, the way we have done the, um, security forces, uh, that are, are protecting.
James Segons.
That are protecting municipal property. It is not a perfect system, but it is better than no system at all. That will be the same with the special constables that we will get hopefully by next year. So little pieces are coming along and it is not perfect, but we're getting there.
Yeah, Council Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your work on this resolution with Council Wall and Council Van Tilburg. I just want to speak to Councilor Sless's point about too big of a committee. He makes a very good point. You get too big of a committee, you're, you're not, you're going to have difficulty arranging meetings. But I just want to, for my two cents, I, I, I think certainly both Board Five councillors that cover the downtown should be on the committee. And I think the mayor should be on the committee. And I think I'd like to suggest that the Chair of Social Services, I think, which is now Council McCurry, will need to be on the committee to get some of the resources there. I'd say some from Police Services, but that you already covered up, Mr. Mayor, as being on Police Services. So I think we've got some of the people that need to be there. I just wanted to put that out there for members of council. I'm happy to help in any way possible. But I think it's more important that we get the right people in the committee that already are connected to services or committees that they're on. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Why don't we move to that then? Because we've got, the task force as it was set up has room for four members and we can expand that by amending it. Tonya, how do we, we have obviously volunteers that want to sit on this. I'm, I'm already on the task force if this passes. Tony, we just take nominations for people who want to sit on those as, as a form of amendment to the task force resolutions that way you suggest we do?
I'm certainly so. Through the mayor, as people were speaking, I did create a running list. So we do have the seven members that have put their name forward to assist in either as a member or in a capacity. So I just noted all the members. This is it here. Well, hasn't been moved, formally moved or seconded to place an amendment on the floor. This is what it could look like, should you want to do that. I did a quick calculation as well on the members as to what your membership would be. There are eleven members before the councillors, so when you add seven, that would take it to eighteen.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you very much, Tonya. I suspected you were probably doing that. Can, can we get a mover then to amend by, I guess, one, it would be to go to seven members of council or six, whatever, and then, uh, those six or seven names, so. Did I get a mover and a secondary so we can make a decision on that? So, Councilant Toski, you're moving what, that we expanded to seven members of council with those, uh, members of council being as indicated in the councillors' wall, Van Tilborg, Carpenter, McCurry, Levan, Stell, and Toski?
Yes.
Okay. So there are secondary. I think I saw Council Ben Tilborg of that. I think I saw your name go on.
Yes, you did.
Okay. So any, any discussion on this amendment?
Yes, I have some discussion. Is there, uh, when we create a task force like this and we don't actually, we haven't discussed with any of the other names that are listed. Their levels of participation or even availability. Is there a way for those other people to be engaged in the task force without affecting quorum? Or are they going to always affect quorum? And I would ask the same of, of councillors. In other words, perhaps we could have one as a, as an alternate, uh, in, in this, in this capacity. Because I don't, I don't, I do not understand how, how you do move with a large task force, uh, as with eight, seventeen or eighteen people.
Well, we, we put this together so quickly that we, there wasn't time to obtain a commitment from various groups. When you see the, with a task of resolution, it's not that they, that they would have to appoint a representative to be on the task force or a designate. So the, if for some reason, one of the groups that was mentioned, stakeholders, they don't appoint someone, then they wouldn't be on, so it wouldn't affect quorum. And the, the task force can recommend to us any additions or deletions as well. And they can do that, uh, at any time. So we could have, we could have, you know, delayed this by another three, four, or five weeks to confirm membership. And, and thinking of myself and yourself, Council Wall, let's just push us ahead. And I'm, I'm sure that, um, I would be confident that these representatives would attend and make a real effort. Anyways, to the amendment, so we do have seven and we have the seven members of council. So to that amendment, it's Council Utley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I just want to speak a little to, to, um, Council Sless and Council Carpenter's concerns about having too many councils on the committee. And, and I would suggest that, uh, the two Ward One councillors, uh, Council McCurry was on the social committee, uh, so service committee yourself. And, and perhaps there's a role for the rest of us to play, uh, in taking on subcommittees. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work to be done here and as, um, many hands make light work. So I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion at, at this time. But I, I, I think we will have a high interest in this, uh, clearly. But I'm always concerned that too many on the committee, uh, can make it unwieldy. And we've got to be, uh, we've got to be small and nippy to get this job done. Thank you.
So to the amendment, uh, Council Carpenter.
Thank you. The amendment named seven members of council. I think we have to be careful with having a majority of members of council on any committee, as I understand it. And staff can comment on that, that we would have a majority of council. And when you have a majority on council, it invokes a lot of different rules and a lot of procedural rules that may make it difficult for the, for the committee to be nimble simply because there's a majority of members of council on it. So I, you know, I, I take the, the comments that, uh, that Council Utley said that there's a lot of work to do. And so maybe some of us can be work as ad hoc committees as that, that are, you may need to need or just even ask for comment. But I, I think that you should also think about making the committee, uh, the council committee, if it's five or if it's six or if it's seven. I, I think it should be five so that you don't have a majority, but that's my opinion. I think you should have the committee members, the voting members being the five members of the committee. members of the committee so that you can get quorum easily. And you can invite those that want to give advice from the downtown core and, and speak to it. But the voting members be the committee members, council members, and that way you're able to meet and have quorum and bring in whoever you need for to consult with or to talk to. So I just want to add that for my two cents. I think you want to make sure that the committee can work. Thank you.
The amendment's on the floor. Counselor Van Der Stel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my 15 cents are as follows. We had, we had representatives from each ward on finance, on social services, and on Mohawk Lake Working Group. Seven is just two more councillors. But I need to point council's attention to all of our priority sessions. I would call and describe our priority-setting sessions as being very nimble. They happened over a very short period of time, assisted by staff, and we came up with all of the priorities that are, well, they fluctuate from time to time. That's why we had three sessions. My argument is that you want as much input as you can get from as many viable sources. And that we are quite nimble. We make these decisions in, on an informed basis and with a very clear indication sent to the public that it's not just one or two or three members of council who are sitting on the, on the, on the proposed task force, but there is indeed a very strong interest, which means that if you forego the necessity to make sure that all members of council are aware, because most already are, but what the most pressing issues are. From my perspective, we as a council are nimble. And it does not, it does not have a bearing on a group of seven, from my perspective and experience. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tony, can you put up that list again? I didn't write it down, so. The seven. Yeah, well, the way this is set up, we've got two from Ward One, which makes sense, the downtown's a Ward One. And then we have at least one representative from each of the other wards and yeah. Council Ward Four, it's two councillors. Anyways, to the, to the amendment. I believe we've got Council Sless.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I would agree that seven councillors is probably nimble, but then you got to add in the other 14 that are going to be on this committee. And it becomes, in my opinion, a little bit unruly. Just because somebody isn't appointed to the committee doesn't mean somebody can't go to the meetings. If they've got something to share or something to offer, then I, I think it would be incumbent on each of us to show up and share what you think might be a helpful idea. So I, the actual composition of the, of the committee to me is, is, I wouldn't say irrelevant, but anybody that wants to participate can, can show up. They might not be a voting member of the committee, but, but I don't think that's going to discourage anybody if they've got something to say and something to share that could move the project forward. So I, I, I still have the same concern, I guess, with the number of people. If we get up into 18, 19, 20 people on a committee, it's, no matter who those people are, it's going to be very hard to get any consensus. It's going to be very hard to get a quorum. It, it's just going to be a bit of a, I think, a cumbersome situation. To me, it'd be, you know, lean and mean and move quickly. And, and I think that's, we certainly got to move quickly on this and, and, and start up right away tomorrow. Because it, it needs addressing. But, but I'm not sure that throwing a whole pile of numbers at something is going to be the answer to the solution. I think a nimble working group with, as Council Utley said, ad hoc committees looking at certain aspects and putting together a group that is not formally on the committee but can, can do work on the side, I think. To me, that, that's a good way to move forward. That's what I would like to see.
All right, thank you, Council Sless, Councilant Toski. To the amendment now.
Yes, thank you. And I, and I, because I moved the amendment, I, I agree with what everybody's saying. When you're getting up into those numbers of 18, 19, my concern would be that we may, that we make sure that the other members that are involved, that it's somehow built into the process that they are involved somehow, whether it be a working group or as an alternate, because it'll be too easy to just forget about those other people that were interested. I am, I'm happy to remove my name from, from the list to try and get these things to be more nimble, but I do want to be involved. And I do like the idea of working groups. I, but I do think 18 is, is, is too many. And I think that there might need to be, because typically speaking, and I know this is the call of the chair, but if you're not a voting member, you often aren't allowed to be a part of the discussion. So I think that we'd want to have something built in. However, that makes the, the meeting still be efficient, that if other members of council do come to these meetings, that they can be heard as well.
Yeah, that would just be giving you, any member of council can attend a task force. I'd say this though, the Economic Recovery Task Force and the Housing Task Force, they were quite large. They were in excess of 20. And they, because of the import of the subject matter being dealt with, the attendance was excellent. And the commitment was outstanding. And we moved forward and accomplished quite a bit in fairly short order. So I'm not necessarily as pessimistic about it. But so Councilant Toski, did you want to have your name removed then to sort of bring us down to six members of council?
I, I, I'm willing to do that as, as long as I'm, I could still be involved in either way, yes.
And that'll give us one board representative and then two from Ward Five. So. Okay, so that's, that's friendly amendment. Who was your secondary on this one? Was ten member? I think it was Council Van Tilburg. Is that, you content with that, Council Van Tilburg? So we're down to six, myself and the six members of council.
Yeah, I'm content with that. I'm content with any type of solution.
Good. Okay. All right. Seeing more hands raised for a discussion on the amendment. Tonya, would you please take?
Sorry, I'd like to withdraw my name. I don't think we should have a majority on, on a committee that causes other difficulties. So I'm happy to participate anyway, but I will draw my name so you have five on the committee. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, free for both the Word Four councillors attending any meeting and giving your input. Absolutely. All right. So let's, with that, Council Toski, you're the mover of that amendment. It's now down. Are you content with that?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Council Van Tilburg?
Yes.
Okay, unless there's any other objections, I'll ask Tonya to take the vote on the amendment with the five council representatives.
My iPad's still spinning its wheels. I vote affirmative.
Certainly, Council Martin, I'll note that. Council Carpenter, we're just waiting on your response. The amendment to item 14.1 Downtown Brantford Improvement Task Force has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Toski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right. Anybody else want to speak to the resolution before I call the vote? Seeing more raised hands. Tonya, would you please? Sorry, Councilant Toski. Slipped right in there.
Sorry, I was trying to hit the button. Just, just a really quick comment, just to make sure that whoever is representing the other groups, that we make sure that there's some, some women on that committee to give that viewpoint and that lens as well, too, please.
Good point. Okay, so Tonya, would you please take the vote?
Item 14.1 being Downtown Brantford Improvement Task Force, as amended, has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, Toski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, we have another notice of motion. That there's a motion to waive. I think it's your motion, not Council Sless.
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. If I could get staff to please put it up on the screen. It's moved by myself and seconded by my wardmate, Council Utley. The section 15.11.5 and 15.3.12 of Chapter 15 of the City of Brantford Municipal Code be waived in order to introduce the following resolution without prior notice of motion and without having been considered at a committee of the whole or standing committee. Whereas the European Gypsy Moth is presenting concerns to Brantford residents as a result of tree deflation, property and health concerns. And whereas the Gypsy Moth lifecycle exhibits large populations every seven to 10 years. And whereas the City of Brantford is currently experiencing this seven to 10-year period. And whereas the Gypsy Moth is currently in the caterpillar stage in the lifecycle, consuming trees across the city and litter the grounds with debris and will begin the transformation to moths over the next few weeks. And whereas the problem is particularly prevalent in Wyndham Hills Estates due to the large hardwood tree population. And whereas the Gypsy Moth infestation this year has area residents concerned about the ability to control the caterpillars as they invade properties and parks. And whereas the preferred controlled method at this time is burlap wrapping of tree trunks and the installation of phenom traps during the next stage of the life cycle. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to provide residents of the Wyndham Hills Estates materials for burlap wrapping of trees, installation instructions to an upset limit of five trees per household for trees located on private property. And the staff be directed to provide one phenom trap per residence in the Wyndham Hills Estate. And that the city be, that the city be directed to cover all associated costs of materials to an upset limit of $5,000 to be funded from the forestry operation, operational budget. And if I could just speak to that, Mr. Mayor. For, for those that I, I'm sure we, everybody on council is familiar with Wyndham Hills. And if you're not, it's a, a very small subdivision across the street from the Walmart complex. It's a, in essence, it's a woodlot that contains about 30 homes. So it, there's hundreds of trees, hardwood trees that are being devastated in that area. And it's, it's going to wipe out the entire tree canopy in, in that area. There's been folks have to go to the hospital with the infestation of the feces from, the, the caterpillars are in such large numbers. We had to send in a street sweeper. The roads were slippery from the caterpillars falling out of trees and getting squished by tires. It, it, it's a living hell out there for the, the residents. And they're certainly counting on, on council to step up and do what we can to do to help. Our staff have been in there and people have been trying on their own to do things. They need some instruction. They, they need some demonstration on how to do this properly. And materials are at a premium. We can get them through our contractor. They can't buy them at, at Lowe's or burlap is at a real premium. So it, it seemed to be the best solution. And they're certainly waiting anxiously. Staff are teed up and ready to move in there tomorrow morning to start instructing people on how to protect these trees.
Okay, we're to the waiver right now.
Okay.
Yep.
So please support the waiver because of all the stated reasons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So to waiver, please. Councilant Toski. Sorry, Councilant Toski.
Sorry, my apologies. My hand was up to speak to the, the main resolution.
Council Van Tilburg, to the waiver.
Yeah, I'm going to support the waiver. The issue is now, and I hope that we can have a broader discussion on the topic.
Council Carpenter, the waiver.
Yeah, I, I would agree that we need to do this now. And when we get to the main motion, I want to add Mohawk Park area, which is having the same problem.
So to the, I don't see the speakers, the waiver. Tonya, would you please take the vote on the waiver?
Council Martin.
The vote affirmative.
Thank you. I'll mark that. Motion to waive the rules for the Gypsy Moth mitigation Wyndham Hills matter has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, Council Sless, can you just confirm you're going, you don't have to read it, but can you confirm you're putting the resolution on the floor with your secondary, Council Utley?
Yes, I'll be moving it. Council Utley will be seconded, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. So to the, to the resolution itself, Council Utley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've driven through Wyndham Hills a couple of times and it is, it's, it's like nothing else I've ever seen. I've seen Gypsy moth infestations before, but nothing as bad as this year. The, Council Sless was not exaggerating with the slipperiness of the, the caterpillars. There are, there have to be millions of caterpillars and all the feces make a hell of a mess of the houses and the cars and the driveways, pools. So it, I, I wish this, there would have been some aerial spraying some time ago in the early stages by, by the ministry. I'm not sure if that's something the city does, but we've got to save these trees. They are, they've been there a long, long time. And if you've never been driven through there, I'd wait till the caterpillars have all died off. But it's a, it's a beautiful area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Governor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, we are experiencing the same problem in Ward Five and Ward Four with the properties that surround Mohawk Park. They're experiencing the exact same kind of problem that has been described here. And we were told by staff, there's limited things that we could do, but this is, this is a good solution to help the residents that's brought, brought for them by the Ward Two councillors. And I don't know about the funding of the 5,000 coming from the Forestry Division. I'm wondering if we could include Mohawk Park area as part of this resolution and make it 10,000 from council contingency fund. There's lots of money there and we could certainly have the funding to do it.
Okay, I need to clear conflict because I actually live in the Mohawk Park area. So I'm feeling a little nervous on this amendment. So, Counselor, Council Wall, I think you're up.
I was thinking if it could be friendly, that's why.
Yeah. Still going to give me a, you know, potential bright smack down the area that benefits from that. So I'm just going to ask Council Wall, can you please take over chairing this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. My apologies. I thought you said I was up like I had this speaking opportunity. I get it. I will gladly assume the chair.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, so is that amendment friendly then?
Yeah, that's friendly to the mover. And friendly to the secondary.
Great. So I believe the order now is Council Vanderstel for the floor.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. You don't miss a thing. I'm wondering if there is any credence to asking our staff, our ground-level staff, for additional pockets of serviceable area that, that may need some advice as well. I know this isn't just, just restricted to one or two or three areas, but five or six to my count. Just want to make sure that we're addressing all the areas of concern, not only for this year, but for next year's onslaught of, of the same critters. So if we can, if that's considered to be a friendly amendment to get, gather more information from our frontline staff, I would appreciate that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I can respond. I, I know manpower is at a premium. It took a lot of pleading and, and a lot of conversations to get agreement to, to take people away from their regular duties, to send them into Wyndham Hills. So I, I know they're, they're dealing in many areas of the city now. I, I don't know whether you've, you've been to the areas, Council Vanderstel, but they, they are working all across the city. And in order to take care of, of the problem that we have in Ward Two, they're taking people out of areas. They're only out, going to be out for about a half a day doing instruction on how to do this properly in Wyndham Hills. Then they're back out onto their regular routes. So I, I, I don't have enough information to tell you, yeah, that would be easy to do or not easy to do. But I saw Indy on the screen and perhaps he has a better handle on this.
Yeah, to the chair, it's something that we can take back and look at our resources and see if our frontline staff have noticed pockets of the city that are maybe worse than others.
and see if our frontline staff have noticed pockets of the city that are maybe worse than others. We can, we can survey our stuff.
Thank you, Indy. Thank you, Chair Wall, appreciated.
Councilor Van Tilburg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Wall. I know that the county had sprayed in various areas. No, we certainly, that would be something I guess to look forward in the city. I just don't know if they have, we have that kind of concentration of trees. My concern with this resolution, which I believe is partially addressed, is that we would have the me too effect. In other words, the gypsy moths are across the city. And yes, there are constant, we have concentrated park pockets, Mohawk Park obviously being one. So I'm happy to see that as a friendly amendment. What I want to know is, I've been dealing with a gypsy moth at my brother's house and they, while we're wrapping with burlap, you've got to take that down and then shake these guys out like you're really capturing them. It is a lot of manually intensive work. And the results really won't be felt this year, but more next year, quite frankly. So the question is, is that if we're providing this stuff, is it going to be the residents to do this, to do the activity? And two, the, I don't know if people know this, but you can be allergic to the, when, when the caterpillars drop down, that's, you know, the string they're hanging on. To some people is like, it's just like it burns your skin. Other people aren't affected. So do we have any, if we're giving out burlap, do we have any responsibility in, I guess that's what I'm saying, do we have any responsibility? Who's doing what and where?
Mr. Chair, I can, I can answer that for Counselor Van Tilburg. We are handing out burlap, but we're also instructing residents in the area of what to do and how to deal with the caterpillars. And you're, you're right, it's very, very labor intensive. So in addition to that, there'll be a video coming out that the staff have created that they're going to put on social media as of tomorrow morning that outlines the problem, outlines exactly how to do it, exactly how to dispose of the caterpillars, how to brush them off the burlap after they're captured. And they're also looking at the, actually, the neighborhood associations are also taking part in it and looking for volunteers to assist. So anybody can go into the parks and take part in this and remove the caterpillars off the trees. And we are, we're actually asking for assistance from anybody that wants to take part and help us with this process. Also, to keep in mind, the caterpillars are coming to the end of their lifecycle. So they're starting to pupate now. We expect maybe another two weeks before they transform into moths, which will eliminate the caterpillar problem and create the moth situation. Hence the need for the pheromone traps to capture the moths at that time. But, but once again, the moths really are less aggressive and less problematic than the caterpillars. It's a caterpillar stage that has done the devastation to the trees, the defoliation of the trees in the parks and across the city.
You good, Councilor Van Tilburg?
Of course, that was an excellent answer.
Excellent. The floor is yours, Counselor Intowski.
Thank you, Chair Wall. And thank you to the board councillors for allowing for the friendly amendment. Mohawk Park residents in the area have been suffering the same plague for a couple of years. And we've done quite a bit of research on this, including, you know, talking to the county and what they're doing. And with Brian, the spraying option is a little bit different for us, even if we're going to be more preventative next year. Spraying around Mohawk Park is difficult. It's a, it's an area where kids hang out. And then any kind of aerial spray requires provincial and federal sign off early in the year. But staff has assured us that they're going to really take a look at what's happening this year with our reactive methods and be more prepared coming into the next year and coming forward with here's how much money we need. So we need to be prepared for this because this really is a plague. It's horrible for the residents. It's also counterproductive for what we're trying to do with our, our tree canopy, particularly since this is a real infestation on our deciduous trees and our hardwoods. So, so the more that we can do to be really aggressive with this and really have volunteers step up and do it because it's really, to me, I don't know, it's a bit of a gross job, but it needs to be done. So thank you to the Ward two councillors for bringing this forward and for allowing the friendly amendment and for staff doing whatever they need to do to help facilitate this for the residents. Because a lot of it is transporting over from, from publicly owned trees. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Intowski. Counselor Les, the floor is yours. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to wrap up, the, I think it's important that we start planning for next year now, before we know what it's going to be next year. And we kind of got caught a little short this year. From what I understand from Mr. Hughes, I believe when we sprayed, it was about $65,000 to, to spray. I could be wrong, but that number sticks in my mind. And as far as allergic reactions, I think I mentioned earlier, I had a mother and a daughter in Wyndham Hills that had to go to emergency. They were all rashed up and swelling up with, between the feces and the, and everything that was coming down. They were trying to clean up and they ended up at the hospital. So it, it's a mess. And I think like Counselor Intowski said, it's a nasty job, but somebody's got to do it. And in Wyndham Hills, I can speak on their behalf. They're quite prepared to do it. They need the wherewithal and they need some instruction because they really, this isn't something they do for a living. So they, they're really not all that familiar with what's coming at them. But alls they know is they're afraid. It's making, it's devastating their neighborhood. And they, they've reached out, they would like help. And it sounds like, and I'm grateful the council's supportive. So I would like to hope it's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, are there any other first time, second time, or maybe even third time speakers? Okay, seeing none, I call the vote on the amended motion.
To the chair, Wall, just want to make sure that I've captured the amendments correctly. Quick shout out to Joel and Indy who helped me in the background to get this ready. Just want to make sure that we're agreeable to the friendly changes that were done.
Excellent. If the mover, second or amenders could give that a once over and give me a nod or a thumbs up. Okay, no objections to what we're voting on. No more speakers. Mr. Mayor, you can't come back this yet. Okay, we're calling to vote. Everyone but the mayor.
Certainly, just a reminder, because of the contingency reserve, this requires a two thirds.
Excellent.
Fourteen point two, gypsy moth mitigation of Wyndham Hills has carried on a recorded vote of nine to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Utley, Les McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, Van Tilburg Wall did receive their required two thirds. Just looks like my computer is frozen, so the vote was completed.
Thank you very much. And my, excellent clerking this meeting. Okay. Mayor Davis, the floor is yours.
I take over now, Counselor Wall? Okay, there's six other notices motion. I don't think anyone else is bringing a motion to waive, but so I'll just be reading titles. I think Counselor Vanderstel, you've got a couple here. The titles of your notices, notices of motion.
To my knowledge, Mr. Mayor, I have one, development incentives for affordable housing developers.
Right, Counselor Intowski, you're next with your.
Thank you, Year of the Garden 2022.
Okay, Counselor Otley, I think you've got one.
Order from Park.
And then Counselor Carpenter, you've got several. Counselor Carpenter, muted.
Sorry, I didn't click hard enough. I'm going to start over. COVID-19 pandemic probably tax late payment relief. And the second one is recording of all in camera meetings. And the third one be Parker Avenue Maintenance.
Hey, well, we got twenty minutes to do our bylaws. That's a short list, I think we can do it. So we'll move into bylaws. First and second reading, Counselor Wall, I think you've got that, that motion, yeah.
It'll be my pleasure. Moved by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counselor Brian Van Tilburg, that lead be given to the mover and second to introduce the following bylaws for the first and second reading, 139, 2021, by law to authorize the execution of agreements individually dated and listed on Schedule A attached here to one subdivision agreement between the Corporation of the City of Branford, Branford Power Incorporated, Empire Communities Limited, the mortgage regarding Winfield West Phase A, Committee of the Whole Operations Administration Report 2021-0601. Two, the agreement between the Corporation of the City of Branford and intact public entities, Inc., regarding procurement of the city's corporate insurance policies for the period July 1st, 2021 to June 30, 2021, Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-0309. One forty, 2021, by law to amend, Chapter 26, Boards Advisory Committees of the City of Branford Municipal Code by repealing Schedule 25, Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee 2021-389, Committee of the Whole Operations Report 2021-0601. One forty-one, 2021, by law to declare and dedicate lots 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 on Plan 1558, City of Branford as part of the public highway to be known as Cumberland Street, Committee of the Whole Operations Administrative Report 2021-0601. One forty-two, 2021, by law to declare and dedicate block 308, Registered Plan 2M, 1964, City of Branford as part of the public highway to be known as Bell House Ave., 2021-174, Committee of the Whole Operations Administrative Report 2021-0601. One forty-three, 2021, by law to amend, by law 70, 2010, being a bylaw to adopt various City of Branford policies, corporate policy 008, employee surveys, recognition awards policy 2021, 241, Committee of the Whole Operations Administrative Report 2021-0601. One forty-four, 2020, by law to amend, by law 3783, being a bylaw to regulate traffic in the City of Branford, Francis Street, Schedule 1 through highways, Committee of the Whole Operations Administrative Report 2021-0601. One forty-five, 2021, by law to designate the downtown community improvement project area 2021-369, Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-0608. One forty-six, 2021, by law to adopt the City of Branford Downtown Community Improvement Plan 2021-369, Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-0608. One forty-seven, 2021, by law to designate Grayfields Community Improvement Project Area 2021-369, Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-0608. One forty-eight, 2021, by law to adopt the City of Branford Grayfields Community Improvement Plan 2021-369, Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-0608. One forty-nine, 2021, by law to amend, Chapter 554, the Municipal Code Noise Control, Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-0608. One fifty, 2021, by law 70, 2010, being a bylaw to adopt various City of Branford policies and to create a corporate policy manual by repealing and replacing finance policy 012, High Water Bill Adjustment Policy 2021-427, Finance Committee Report 2021-0609. One fifty-one, 2021, by law to confirm the proceedings, Council of the Corporation of the City of Branford, respect to the meeting held on June 22nd, 2021.
And your second is Counselor Van Tilburg?
Counselor Brian Van Tilburg.
Okay. Does anybody want any of these separate for discussion purposes versus second reading? Seeing no request? Okay, so now call the vote on first and second reading of those bylaws, please, Tonya. I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, Counselor Martin, I'll mark that. The first and second reading of all bylaws have carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Utley, Les McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, Van Tilburg Wall, Mayor Davis.
Counselor McCurry, I think you've got the right, can you read the resolution, please? Read your third reading.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counselor Martin's the second. I moved that by law 139, 2021 through to, including 151-2021. You read it third time, finally passed and signed by the mayor and clerk.
All right, does anybody wish any of the, any of these separated for discussion purposes? Seeing no such request. Tony, would you please take the vote then, third reading?
Counselor Martin.
Vote affirmative.
Thank you, I'll note that. All bylaws for third and final reading have carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Vanderstel, Utley, Les McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, Van Tilburg Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, so while I'm assigning the bylaws, we're around to award announcements. So starting the left top corner here, as I'm looking at the gallery, that review, Councilor Vanderstel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as we go through this process of reopening, it's good to see that so many vaccines are being handed out and that our numbers are so high, not only in Canada, but the area, the region as well. And as we go through the exercise of reopening, I just want to encourage not only residents Ward one, but elsewhere as well. Just pop over to mybranford.ca on your, your computer, your phone, your laptop, whatever you've got. And we'll constantly be updating that. Any questions that you have about what's open when and what's going to happen next, that kind of a thing. Those updates happen on a regular basis. As we move out of the EOC eventually, all of the updates will be at that site, mybranford.ca. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, there's a Homedale Neighborhood Association meeting, June 30 via Zoom at 6:00 PM. And I'm noticing a slight improvement in litter. So if you're out there picking up or not throwing it out your car window, keep up the good work. So let's be proud of our city and keep it clean. Thank you.
You, Counselor Intowski.
Thank you, Mayor. The Be a Kind Canadian campaign. If you have not already done so, contact your neighborhood association. Get a red ribbon tied around your tree. I believe, oh shoot, I believe the dates are June 26th to July 1st. If anybody wants to correct me on that, that would be great. Anyways, let's show what a kind community we are and get those red ribbons tied around your tree or your porch or your, but where somebody can see it. Thank you.
Counselor McCurry.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, maybe get some bug spray to put on those red ribbons and catch a few gypsy moths while you're at it, folks. Counselor Martin and I were hoping to have a resolution tonight regarding traffic calming on Driftwood. We didn't get that quite together in time. That'll come next month.
Counselor Wall. Hey, thanks. Yeah, I'll just give a shout out like I always do to the neighborhood associations, which are phenomenal. That is Eastport Echo Place Neighborhood Association, who are doing all sorts of great stuff in your community. Highly recommend you check them out. Then the Downtown Central Neighborhood Association and the Eagle Place Community Association. And then, I mean, if there's anybody watching this meeting, I highly recommend and encourage people pay attention when they're driving their cars. Please slow down. As the weather has gotten significantly nicer, there's just so many more kids out there playing, people out walking around, and it is just wild how some people are driving on our streets in our community, not to mention how loud some of their cars are. Hey, Counselor McCurry? Sorry. Please consider working with your neighborhood association who are doing a coordinated campaign with the slowdown in our neighborhood signs. You know, they're rotating them throughout the community. At least I know the Eagle Place Community Association is. I'm also meeting with a couple of constituents this week to talk about some traffic calming measures in the community. So please, if you're out there, drive safe. And then ultimately with the Opening Ontario, get out there and shop, people, get out there. You know, maybe try to take not nearly, you know, spend a little less time on the patio, let somebody else have some time on the patio so we can get some more rotations going through on the patios, especially for our restaurants and businesses. And for the love of the Lord, somebody please help out our hairdressers and tattoo industries and other professions that have still not been able to open. If you're listening to this, Doug Ford, open up the hair salons and other personal service industries, please. Yeah, that's it.
Counsel Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to give a big shout out to the Amazing Neighbor Association of Eastport Echo Place. One of the things that's I've, one, one of the um, things that's happened with COVID is a lot of Zoom meetings are happening. So I'm, I'm able to attend a lot more neighbor associations than I have been uh, able to when, when it was a physical presence. In fact, I don't think I've missed a net Eastward Echo Place Neighbor Association meeting, uh, at least not this year. Uh, but they have a tremendous team. They're doing a fantastic amount of things in the community. But I want to th- thank them for their big cleanup. They just been, and I know councillor Outley would like this, the, the big cleanup that they did uh, just yesterday. And I, so I want to, I want to give a big shout out to the people that were listed in this. I want to thank you, Monique and family, Sierra and family, Megan and family, Michael, Cynthia, Sophie, Michelle, Dwayne and family, Brenda, Amber, Keith, Robin, Janine, Cohen, Paul and Dale. Uh, you, you did a great job and you got great uh, leadership, Paul, and that neighbor association, you're doing a tremendous amount of things anyway that I can help you. You know, I'm there for you. And secondly, I want to remind everybody that Canada Day facilities that will be happening online, virtual. Uh, please check the city's website for what's happening on Canada Day and what, what you can do and how you can participate. Uh, go to the city's website to, to get that information. And I want to remind everybody that school's out this week, Thursday. And the children will be out playing and they will be ha- happy to see their friends as COVID numbers are down. And uh, I've, I've been reporting the COVID numbers every day since the pandemic, not missed a day. One today, that's remarkable. We're making great progress at getting vaccinated and keeping the numbers down. So remember the children will be out visiting their friends that they haven't seen for a while. Be careful in the streets, slow down, watch out for the kids. Uh, they're, they're really thinking about their friends that they haven't seen for almost a year. Uh, just be extra careful out there around, around the children. Everybody have a wonderful Canada Day. Thank you.
That's just. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, most of what I had has already been spoken, so I'll, I guess I'll just skip right to the end and, and that's the vaccines. Uh, I would encourage those who haven't had their first shot, please get out and get one. Uh, everybody is, is very good at complaining about what's not open. Uh, the way to get it open is to get vaccinated and, and get everybody safe and we can uh, we can get opened up and get back to normal. So if, if you've had your first shot, make sure you get your second shot. If you haven't had a shot, get a shot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Martin. Just that now that things are starting to open up, be sure to get out and support your favorite restaurant to help them stay in business. And last, I'd like to say a few things. Um, you know, we're about to enter into our July uh, meeting break. So the next meeting of council will be, I believe it's August 3rd, Committee of the Whole. And hopefully by then we are well into stage three and that we have the worst of this pandemic behind us. That'll be a, I think we should have a special day to celebrate that, whatever that day might be and whenever we might know that. And, and I'd, I'd agree with uh, what's been said. I mean, vaccines, vaccines, vaccines. When your second appointment comes up, please get vaccinated. Don't delay. You can probably advance if there's loads of vaccine coming in over the next several weeks. That's the best way to ensure that we never see a lockdown and we don't see any fourth wave. And just protecting yourselves and your family members, your loved ones, your working colleagues. There's no better way to take care of one another than getting the vaccine, uh, second dose, first dose as your opportunity comes up. And last, I want to wish everybody a very safe and happy Canada Day. And the other thing I think we have to look forward to through August and September, I know I'm looking forward to it. And that is the resumption of actual in-person uh, activities that uh, so charities and whatnot can start doing some of their fundraising. So I'm hoping that, I feel very confident our fall will look like nothing like last fall and more like it normally looks. And um, I know we're all eagerly awaiting that. And yes, I'm desperate to, to make an appointment with, to get my haircut. See, for the better. Um, so with that, I want to wish everybody uh, safe and uh, happy July and uh, we'll see y'all again in August. Thanks.
Bye, everyone. Good job, Mr. Mayor.
Good night.
Get vaccinated.
Yeah.